I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Monona for Monday, October 20th, 2014. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Bussey?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval in minutes of the October 6th meeting?
Move approval.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Corrections, deletions, or additions?
On the first page, under unfinished business, reads Alder Bussey recused himself from the following discussion if he could add, "in voting due to professional conflicts."
Clerk, get that?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Appearances section, the very first thing we have is a proclamation declaring October 20th as Pink Day in the city of Monona in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Chief, would you step to the podium? Or Sarah? Lieutenant? Everyone?
Sargent?
For those viewers, do not adjust your TV dial. My pink is a different kind. That doesn't show up. I apologize. I have the following proclamation that I'm proud to share with you this evening, which reads, "Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer, and whereas since the inception of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, mammography use has doubled and breast cancer death rates have declined. Still, many women do not utilize mammography at regular intervals. And whereas mammography is the best available method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and breast cancer deaths could decline further if women received mammograms at regular intervals. And whereas the Monona Public Library offers the Coleman Collection, a special collection of over 400 books, DVDs, picture books, audiobooks in both English and Spanish, and online resources on breast cancer and women's health, and in recognition of the importance of this collection, has distributed a pink cupcake to anyone checking out one of these support materials today. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert E. Miller, Mayor of the city of Monona, Dane County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Monday, October 20th, 2014, as Pink Day in the city of Monona. I invite all residents and employees of the city of Monona to wear pink today and throughout the month of October for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I urge women and their families in the city of Monona to get the facts about mammography signed in the city of Monona this 20th day of October, 2014." Chief?
Thank you.
What is your title now, ladies?
Community Resources Office.
Community Resources Office.
Crowe.
Lieutenant?
Crowe.
All right.
Patrick, we want you to show more.
We've got to come over here.
All right. You ready? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You got some cupcakes back here?
All right.
For anybody interested, we're selling cupcakes, suggested $5 donation, and that'll go to a program called Justice for Care, and all the money raised with Justice for Care stays locally here in the Dane County area to help out victims of breast cancer and cancer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for doing it. I think that's a little unfair to wave cupcakes in front of our faces before we know the price, but well worth it. Under item D, under item E, excuse me. Item E is the public hearing section where we receive public input regarding the proposed 2015-2019 capital improvements program and 2015 capital borrow, excuse me. Were you here to speak at all about the capital budget or?
Well, I'm proposing or asking you guys to consider my cost of the money.
Okay. Well, then we'll rope you into that section then. All right. Otherwise, I'd go back. All right. So we'll open the public hearing. We have two appearances. The first is Curtis Jones of 6102 Bridge Road, who would like to speak for informational purposes about Bridge Road/Frost Woods safety. If you could step to the podium, please, Curtis, because you'll be a TV star.
And around some topics that are not enough, maybe we could share?
We'll share.
All right. Awesome.
Thank you.
Hey, I guess you guys can each have your own.
All right. Thanks, Curtis.
I apologize for not having enough for everybody.
So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. My name is Curtis Jones. I'm a resident here in Monona for the last, I don't know, about five years, and live on Bridge Road with my 11-year-old daughter, Evelyn. And what I'm calling, what I'm here today about, to talk about is the obvious traffic congestion that we're experiencing on Bridge Road. You know, the Broadway construction project has diverted a lot of traffic through the Bridge Road and Frost Woods Road through fare, which really isn't supposed to be a through fare. But even before that, it was a problem with a lot of cars going through, and after Broadway's done, it's still going to be a problem. And so what I'm asking the city of Monona to do is consider some very simple, well, they seem simple to me, but I don't know the bureaucracy that takes to get things done, maybe inexpensive, easier ways of addressing the safety issues that are coming from that high levels of traffic that are coming through that area, and also maybe addressing some of the barriers to the utilization of Bridge Road Park, which is a highly underutilized park and the only park that really serves that southeast corner of the Monona community. So, what I'm asking the council to consider is the installing of bike lanes on those two roads and one lane of parking, so, and a parking lane on both roads. Now, on the Frost Woods Road, there's already and no parking sign on one side of the street. And I can kind of just go through this real quick. So, the second page of this just kind of shows that obviously there's a lot of traffic on Bridge Road and on Frost Woods Road. If anybody's driven through there, they see it themselves, especially during rush hour. They're, pretty common occurrence for the traffic to be backed up the entire length of the road in the morning and in the afternoon. It is not a safe place for kids to be traveling, or adults even, to be traveling. The funny thing about the road is it is 36-foot wide. It is one of the wider roads of all of Monona, and it's actually wide enough to do bike lanes on both sides of the street and striped parking on one side of the street. All right. So, if you look at the second page of pictures on there, you'll see that without these lanes, and this was just from today, cars don't park, cars don't drive near the center lane. Cars drive near the curb, which is a real problem. Like, they don't try to avoid the edge of the road. They try to, they actually go towards the edge of the road because they're trying to avoid the cars coming from the other direction. That is a bigger harm to them psychologically than somebody who might actually walk into the street to use the street as a through fare or to access Bridge Road Park. So, you know, cars are driving near the edge of the road. As I said before, the street is 36-foot wide. City of Madison has standards around this. They're recommending a bike lane to be about five-foot wide, parking lane to be about eight-foot wide. That would leave about nine foot per each direction for driving, which is actually within the range of what they would recommend. They actually, if you want to get people to drive a little slower, because speeding's also a problem, they actually recommend even narrower driving lanes, because narrower lanes actually promote people to drive a little slower. Bridge Road, another thing that was kind of interesting, Bridge Road is the only, what's called a collector's street in the entire city of Monona that has parking on both sides of the street. Every other street, and even some of the non-collector streets that are just residential streets, have no parking on one side of the street based on the amount of traffic that they get. So, it doesn't make sense to me that you would have parking on both sides of Bridge Road. There's usually not that much parking on Bridge Road. One side of the street would be ample of parking to meet the needs of both sides of the street houses. So, you could easily get rid of parking on one side of the street and have enough to meet everybody's needs, and then therefore free up that space to create safety areas for biking and for parking, which would further remove the cars away from the curb. The other thing that, and I don't know if this is, I noticed that people had stopped parking there in the last maybe week or two, but there's a turn on Bridge Road near the park where it kind of curves further, I guess, west, if I'm not mistaken. That's a blind turn to somebody who's going north on Bridge Road, walking, and you actually have to walk out into traffic to get around cars that are parked there. It is highly dangerous. Any car, you don't know what's coming around that curve, and they don't know what's coming around the curve when they're turning it either. So, it is very lucky that somebody hasn't, or maybe somebody has gotten hurt on that curve. You know, it's a really dangerous situation there. No parking on that side of the street would get rid of that blind curve and then remove that safety situation as well. The other thing is, obviously Bridge Road Park is not as utilized as it could be. My understanding is that there's plans to remodel Bridge Road Park, which I think would be going a long way towards making it some more attractive place for people in the community to utilize, but there's still really no safe way to access the park from a lot of places in that community. So, I'd ask that the city also consider crosswalks. Everywhere else I could find in Monona, when there is a reason to have people crossing the street, there's a crosswalk, except for in front of Bridge Road Park. I'm not really sure why there aren't any markers there. You look at Maywood Park, there's actually a sign in the middle of the street saying pedestrian with a little reflector on it, clearly identifying a place where people can safely walk across the street. There is absolutely nothing indicating that for Bridge Road Park. So, anybody who's on the west side of Bridge Road has to run out in front of traffic to access Bridge Road Park, and that's a big problem. So, that's really it. I mean, I just want to kind of put this out there, you know, and just hopefully the city can consider putting these stripes down. I think the residents there would go, you know, would be really appreciative of it, and, you know, I think it'd go a long way towards improving the livability of that community and keeping people safe in that area. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Because it's not on the agenda, there's not public debate, but if anyone wants clarification, Alder Wood?
Yeah, just a couple of comments or suggestions for what you do next with this, if you want to, one, I guess, first, there is a.
Go ahead.
There's a residential traffic management program being considered right now by, in the committees, which might be kind of relevant to your proposal. If you're interested, I think both the Public Safety Committee and the Public Works Committees would be the appropriate place for you to go with your proposal, and I'm not on either one of those committees, but the chairs of both committees are present tonight.
That was going to be the normal course of.
Can I, all of those things, the traffic marking things, and it should come to Public Works, and we can put it on the next agenda?
Yep. Public Works and Public Safety are the two appropriate venues. And if you go to mymonona.com, both of their schedules are on that. And Public Works would be able to address the striping of the crosswalk at the very least.
Okay.
Not to mention the others.
And no parking?
Yep, and the others. And just because of the awareness that it has been a thorough fair, police presence has been requested, and I think the police are, you should be seeing police coverage during rush hour more because there were.
And we absolutely do, and I appreciate that, you know.
It's not to say, I realize, but.
It's not, right. It's, you know, I'd rather have the police freed up to be doing more important things than watching people drive through Bridge and Frost Woods, you know.
I had one other, one other comment was that I believe we might be doing some kind of road maintenance treatment on Bridge Road this coming year. So, that might be a good, you know, would be an easy thing to incorporate along with that program, or we do, I think we usually do the pavement markings late in the year.
We change that to right after school. They try to get most of them done right when school, at the beginning of summer vacation, when kids are most mobile.
Okay.
Alder Holmquist?
I'll save mine for Public Safety.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have Kathy Carr, 4713, Tony Wathah Trail, would like to speak against the level expenditure proposed for the Schluter Park in Schluter Beach. Kathy, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Herald Independent of the 9th of October, 2014, reported that the city budget has been, will probably include $540,980 for the Schluter Beach channel dredging. Bear in mind that it's a short channel. $125,000 for Schluter Park dredging and beach improvements. Will we be stationing lifeguards there? I am a, and the other thing, $250,000 for the Schluter Park restroom design and construction. I am afraid we are going to be spending a lot of money on Schluter Park and Schluter Beach and in the process ruin what is a wonderful park right now. It is a small park, a place where families with little children, whom we have been encouraging to move to Monona, and people of every age can feel comfortable in a beautiful, basically quiet environment. At the September 15th council meeting, the Parks Director spoke of Schluter Park as having the potential to be a regional attraction. Schluter Park is already appreciated by the bikers and boating groups from wherever that stop there. I fear that we would lose the gentle atmosphere of the place if that much money is poured into Schluter Park. And of course, I'm concerned about the survival, not only of the cottonwoods, but also the stands of oak and hickory and pine trees that make the park so special. I am curious to know if the neighbors there have been informed that they are slated to be next door to, quote, "a regional attraction," unquote, and how they would respond to that In general, I would like to urge the council to remember that the U.S. economy is doing better than most other world economies right now, as the Wisconsin State Journal keeps repeating, but better doesn't mean that we're doing well. With all the uncertainties lurking, please be cautious in your spending and borrowing plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening? See none, I declare the public hearing section closed. There is no consent agenda this evening, so moving on to council action items, under unfinished business, item 1A is consideration of Resolution 14-09-1986, which is approving a 2014 capital funds transfer for Schluter Park restroom design brought forth by the Parks and Rec Director and was tabled at the last meeting. And the city administrator has some information regarding this?
Yeah. Staff still has some work to do in regards to tabulation for this process, so my recommendation to this body would be to table it until the next council meeting.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, before we do that, and I don't, the Parks Board members may have comments on this as well, but my understanding, just to kind of address some of the things that Ms. Carr brought up, the, I think, believe the design for the dredging has been revised to reduce the number of, especially the cottonwood trees that would have to be removed.
That's correct.
And the other thing I would note, I think the reference to it being a regional attraction was perhaps a bit of an overstatement, would be, I think, it would encourage more bikers, it would make it more bike-friendly for all the bikers going around the lake, so hopefully it would attract more of them. But in terms of being a regional attraction, say on the level of the Dream Park, I don't see that, the changes making it that, you know, much of a regional draw. And, you know, the bathrooms are awful, have been awful for it. Probably the entire time that I've lived in Monona, which was starting in 1985, they've been, so, they need to be replaced, but.
All right. What is the will of this body? To table this? Is there a motion?
Tabled, we just, can we just leave it there?
We'll just leave it on the table.
Leave it on the table.
You're right. Moving on to item 1B is consideration of Resolution 14-10-1988 as approval of the 2015-2019 capital improvements program and 2015 capital borrowing. Mark, is there anything before we move into that that you wanted to add? One thing, if you recall, Alder Bussey at the last meeting had asked for report out of where our 2014 capital stands, what was used, what hasn't been used.
Fund balance.
Fund balance?
Yeah.
Do you have that?
We've sent an email, Alder Bussey. Basically, right now, the projections will have about 400, I believe it was 40,000 left. 400,000 of that's for the fire truck we're not using. Everything else is basically coming right on budget, right, staying hold and steady, so there's really not a lot of leeway. You know, everybody's budgeting what they're supposed to be and spending what they're supposed to be, so, so about $40,000.
Can you see that holding true through the rest of this fiscal year?
It's been consistent the last couple of years. It's been, I mean, they're budgeting, that's why we're doing the one year, so to make sure they're pretty on course to what we budget.
Okay. Is there?
Before Mark leaves, I think there were also, there's at least one technical amendment for the restroom work that, because the actual cost is projected to be 350,000, with 250 coming from GO bonds and the rest from other revenues, that that, if that's, if I'm accurately describing, which I think is.
Well, yeah, right now we have that 250. He did it in description for the 100,000. When we did the budget from the mayor's, we left it at the 250, so I guess I don't know if that technically should be 350 or 250, but we left it in with the mayor, put it as, I know Jake put that in there in his description.
Do you know anything more, Jake, since our meetings?
There are several grant opportunities that would apply to the Schluter Park proposal. However, their deadlines are May 1st, and so they're always like a year out, so we're gonna probably miss the boat on the one most likely. We're still waiting to see what Dane County comes out with as far as their bicycle grant program that looks to be supplementing the former Parks grant program.
Doing away with the parks and pushing it into bicycles, so I suggest we get at the top of that list.
Sure. So, that would be the one, you know, the one option. If we're looking at the existing same design that we have at Oneida, just doing the calculations on square footage and kind of using the cost estimate, we're probably gonna be somewhere between 300 and 350,000 for the shelter and the path system that's there currently to replace that.
So, that would come as an amendment if it wanted to be changed?
Trying to do it that way, too.
Yep. All right. Is there a motion for approval of the capital budget? I'll move approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Are there, there are amendments, and we'll just take those in order. The first is the relocation of the digital message board, which would mean a change, decreasing the capital budget by $31,200 to eliminate the relocation. This is brought forth by Alder Wood. I'll move approval. I'll second. There's a motion, second discussion. Alder Wood?
Yeah. Probably it should say delay rather than eliminate. I don't have a problem with relocating it, which is, I think, basically this is more of a, let's see a way to reduce the borrowing. This seemed like an item that could probably wait another year. I never saw whether there was a DOT letter or just verbal communications from them and what exactly, how much leeway we have, and I guess.
I think they're okay if we keep it as it is now, the consistent, this says, "Welcome to Monona," or says, "Monona" on it, and if there would be an Amber Alert or an emergency, they would allow us to broadcast that pre-approved message on that. There is one circumstance that this might fit into, but I've not pursued that, but the bank who donated this and paid for all of this, not the brickwork, but of the electronic sign, they're considering a different electronic sign at their Bridge Road Bank, and it might be the case that if they would want to move that one there, solve this whole cost if we. Alder Thomas?
I just wanted to say, we leave it where it is as is, sort of useless.
Right.
It's not very, I mean, we can't get messages out, we can't use things, we can't use it for the purpose intended for an entire year. And I, I guess, for me, I want, I want to balance the budget in terms of what we spend versus what we pay off, but I'd like to hold this at the end to see how we come out, because I don't want to delay this if it's not absolutely necessary. I mean, we're gonna, you know, we're delaying some others, at least we're proposing to delay some other things like the plow truck, and we're gonna end up in the same situation next year where we got high budget and we are gonna have to delay other things. So, unless we need to do this to balance the budget, I don't see the need to do it.
Is the maker of the motion willing to wait for it at the end? Okay, in the second? Both the maker and the second of the motion, would Alder Thomas? Alder Holmquist?
I had a message in to the finance director, and I'm not sure if the second round of feedback regarding, look at the potential of this being TIF-eligible. I know initially there was concern that it wouldn't be, and I'm just curious on how, if we continue to talk about pushing a message out and those things, how that wouldn't fall underneath marketing.
The, it's, it's not a marketing issue. The sign is existing, and it's about four years old now. Because of that, it would be an operating expense that would be deemed maintenance. Now, if something was purchased, that would be, that would be a capital item, and the walls could probably be capitalized, but it's, right now, it just wasn't the right thing to do and was really outside of the limits there.
I'm sorry, Mark? Okay. Alder Spate, then Alder Wood? So, to follow up on Alder Holmquist's query, if we were to potentially build a new sign, it would be TIF-eligible?
If we, if we built the walls and purchased a brand-new digital message board, that would be TIF-eligible.
Okay.
Yes.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I guess that, again, yeah, following up on Alder Holmquist's comments and questions. First of all, it's, and Pat's comment that it's four years old, do we know what the life of these, the expected life of this message board is?
LED bulbs, so they should last, you know, other than, it's more weather getting into the back panel of it that does.
The bulbs might, but the other mechanics, that is another question.
Yeah, I would, it would be less than 10 years, and with the advancing in technology, I would doubt that it's even that.
Okay. And the other thing is, out of the 31,200, do you have an idea what the breakdown would be between building the new brick, you know, the new walls, assume we'd stay with the same flagstone type of treatment, versus the cost actually? the cost to actually move the sign?
Yeah, the, the walls or the, the actual framing of the message board at a new location would be about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the rest of the money would be replacing what's currently at the Nichols and, I'm sorry, the Broadway and Nick, and Minona Drive location. We would be filling in that void there on that sign and rewiring and, um, a lot of the electrical, mechanical work to be done at its new location. So it's about fifty-fifty between the, uh, the moving of the board and the construction of the walls.
Alder O'Connor?
Just without having a chance to do the math exactly on that, it sounds like I might be able to make an argument to just leave the one that's there, there, and build a new, if we need, have another location where we want the message, the changeable message, is build a new one with the new sign. And it sounds like the new sign.
I guess I would as a courtesy to the bank, because they bankrolled that and it was thirty, twenty-nine thousand dollars or nineteen thousand?
No, no, it was fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand? If we're just gonna keep it static, I would like to give them the option if it, before they spend another fourteen thousand to put one at bridge, that they could transfer that one down and we would only have to put, you know, rather than have an overkill sign that, okay?
What is the problem with it being where it is now? And why could there be one at bridge but not, I mean, that's a busy intersection, too. I don't.
Yeah, basically, it's, it, because it's on D O. T. right-of-way, they don't allow , uh, devices that distract drivers from, um, traffic. So anywhere that in D O. T. right-of-way, they do not allow the changeable message board unless it's specific traffic safety, um, information, like the ones they just put on the Belt Line are more traffic safety, um, information. So they wouldn't allow this. And it's barely on, um, the state right-of-way right now, or D O. T. right-of-way. Um, and we can't move it. Um, there's some issues with the P D. Q. and where they have their gas fueling tanks back there. So, um, it can't be moved in its current location.
All right. Moving, uh, to item fifteen dash two, Pirate Island dredging engineering. Alder Wood has proposed removal of the Pirate Island dredging engineering portion of the budget for eighty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second. Alder Wood?
Yes, again, this is, well, it's partly an effort to hold down the, the capital spending. It's also, I think, to wait and maybe coordinate this with the triangle development. And then finally, when we do the dredging, we need to look at the possibility of putting it in TIF.
Discussion. All right, there's a motion and second for this amendment. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Budget amendment fifteen dash two passes. Item fifteen dash three is brought forth by Alders Wood, Spate, and O'Connor. It's the, to eliminate the pool study for future renovation of twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
A second.
There's a second, there's a motion and second. Alder Spate?
Uh, well, again, this was to try to keep our borrowing in line with what we're able to pay off. And I think the comment was made during public, uh, discussion that this is a long-term plan, this study. Uh, I would say that while I do support putting this off a year, I do think it is in the interest of the community to do this in the next few years, because I do think our pool needs, uh, to be properly assessed. And we need to have a long-term plan for improvements to that facility. But having said that, um, I think this can wait a year.
Further discussion?
Alder Holmquist?
And I, I agree with this amendment. However, I just want to make it kind of, put this out on the table that each year during operation time, we get to that line item of pool revenue and have that discussion around why was the revenue lower this year? And as the director has indicated, we can't keep saying it's the weather. Um, so I think this is an important item, and it's, in the way it connects with our operating budgets. And to be aware of that when we start that discussion of, we're having concerns at that end. We need to then address this issue as well.
Alder Spate?
I'd just quickly add that we do currently have a special committee looking at the hours of the pool and how we might improve, uh, the overall public use. There, you know, there are many different, uh, individuals looking for access to the facility, and we do serve a lot of constituents across the spectrum. And so, uh, your point is an excellent one, and we're hoping that committee will help us to, to make some changes that improve our overall, uh, attendance and revenue, um, structure.
Alder Wood?
I would just like to echo some of the comments already made that, you know, favor, um, doing a pool study in not-too-distant future. Um, and I think make, Alder Holmquist makes a good point about the revenues. And I, and certainly, well, the pool, I believe, is twenty-one years old, twenty-two years old. Um, I, my recollection of the last time, Alder Thomas might remember this as well, that when we re, um, last time we did the pool, we actually replaced the entire pool. It was dug out completely, and I believe it was closed for an entire swimming season. If we can avoid that, maybe it's not possible to avoid that. But, um, so it, we don't want to wait too long to do this, but I think we can wait at least a year.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
The amendment passes. You're keeping the tally on these. All right. Item fifteen dash four is to increase the street and repair and maintenance budget by eighty thousand dollars, brought forth by Alder Wood. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Alder Wood?
Um, with your, well, with your indulgence, in just a moment, I want to run through the PowerPoint that I prepared up at the.
Guys, could you bring the PowerPoint up, please?
I'm sure my.
Alder, Alder Woods?
Yeah. And I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna go up there in a second, but essentially, this is, and it, the reason I got into this was to sort of catch up, uh, our maintenance of local roads after the Minona Drive project. Um, so it would, it would increase the proposed spending from three hundred and twenty-five thousand to four hundred and five thousand. Uh, let's go, oh, there we go.
That's the second presentation, Will.
The other one's.
Okay.
And I can go through it without the enable editing, click.
Yeah.
I'll just do the, uh, maximize it. Okay. Welcome to, I'm Doug Wood. I live at fifty-three O'Forsley Road. Um, okay. Do I use the down arrows?
Yeah.
Oh, there they are. Okay. Sorry, I went, went through that slide. Um, and I should say is, um, one thing, that this is not a precedent-setting effort on my part, so, which is, you're probably all happy about. Um, Minona's got thirty-three point eight two miles of local roads, which does not include Minona Drive or Broadway or the Belt Line because they're not under our jurisdiction. Um, from two thousand and three to two thousand and nine, the city, we made a really concerted effort to do a lot of roadwork and actually a lot of reconstruction that included replacing old utilities, not utiquetes, um, which are much more expensive projects. So that many of our local roads only need surface maintenance, which there are various types of treatments, as I learned in communicating with Dan. Apparently only two of our streets don't have concrete curb and gutter, so we won't be doing streets with assessments much. There are still three or four projects that will require replacement of old cast iron water mains, which are much more expensive. There's one proposed for twenty seventeen eight and twenty eighteen, engineering in seventeen and reconstruction in eighteen, and that's three point two million. So there's still some other expensive projects out there. During the Minona Drive project, from the five-year period inclusive of twenty ten to twenty fourteen, we very appropriately reduced the spending that we did on those roads. And we reconstructed just, or maintained three point six miles of roads, which is an average just under three-quarters of a mile a year. And at that rate, it would take us forty-seven years to rebuild or do maintenance projects on the thirty-four miles of local streets, which I would suggest is quite a bit too long. And I should thank Dan Stefani for his, um, willingness to spend some time and provide a whole lot of information to me. Um, I sent him one email with a lot of questions, and he answered those, and that led to me asking a whole bunch more questions than he answered. So I appreciate that. And part of it is, is that there are at least three different types of sort of cert, road surface reconstruction projects, and those are all proposed for the next year. Based on the information that Dan gave me, there were three point six miles of good, of candidates for twenty fourteen for, um, one of the three types of, uh, treatments. At an estimated cost of four hundred and three thousand, six hundred and, six hundred dollars with the, which is seventy-eight thousand, six hundred more than the proposed budget. So that's where, where I got my number of four oh five. This would accelerate surface repairs, the local streets would help catch up after the Minona Drive years, um, would increase our average, um, to one point two miles per year from the three-quarters of a mile that we had been doing. Um, and without the amendment, we would still be doing two point nine miles this year. So the, which would take, anyway, it's, it's not that the budget that was proposed is, is terrible. I just think, given the circumstances, um, it's, we need to put a little more effort into it for this year. And again, not, that's not precedent-setting either. And the budgeting impact, I think, would be a whole lot of happy people, including Dan Stefani and everybody who drives on our streets. So that is it. I'll return to my seat for further discussion.
Questions? Alder O'Connor, then Alder Holmquist?
Could you just, um, I guess clarify for me, Alder Wood? Is this, my understanding, uh, when I first saw this, was that this increased cost is what it would cost to actually do everything to the streets that are already proposed to be repaired? That the, is it that the, the?
Right.
The amount that was originally, the three hundred and twenty-five is really not enough to do that? Is that what you're saying?
Right. And, um, from the candidates.
Additional streets, I guess that's my.
Not, well, no. Um, it was based on the candidates that, that Dan had identified in the road lengths, and yet he gave him the estimated cost for that. Now, you know, he might choose to do some different streets that aren't in there. And I don't want to tell him which streets to do with what treatment or anything, but.
Alder Holmquist, then Alder Bussey?
So I have a couple of questions. One is, I have a question for Mr. Stefani as well regarding the variation in, um, the projection for annual street repair from fifteen through nineteen. And the question started that we're budgeting for three twenty-five for, for fifteen, and two hundred K. for the next two years, and then drops on to one fifty. And so one of the pieces that was indicated was the money has historically been shifted to cover some other projects. And from these numbers and some history, and hopefully, if I have it wrong, please correct me, that prior to this year, we were between one fifty and two hundred annually, which seems to be the consistent amount going forward. And Dan, maybe it would be easier just, because there's gonna be one more question that might be more detailed.
If I could make, respond to that while Dan's coming up there. I suspect that the, the one fifty-ish number that you've seen is, was, was the Minona Drive era. I don't know if you went back farther than that.
This is forward for eighteen to nineteen.
Right. But didn't you say that it was also past years?
Yeah, I'm married, Dan.
Right. To address that, Alder and Holmquist, um, last year, I think we were directed to actually update the five-year capital plan. Um, those numbers out into the future years, those are estimates just based off the past, past practice. Um, I did not update any of the future years this year. I just focused on, on twenty fifteen.
And can I, can I follow up or no? All right.
Can I follow up to that also? Um, also noted in the, uh, Alder Wood's presentation was a large expenditure in seventeen, I believe, and eighteen. And that, that would be through the, um, the capital side. So, um, uh, we may not do as much maintenance during those years where we're doing large capital projects.
And the slide that indicated there were three different levels of repair being looked at and the, the gap between what was being requested here and what was in the mayor's budget. And I'm curious if it were, if that is other streets being impacted, or is it one of those items that is being added as additional?
My intent was to, just to reflect the links of the roads that Dan had proposed, not necessarily to add more to that. I'm assuming he was, and he can speak himself, but in our discussions, email discussions, I think, you know, he was gonna have to exercise some judgment about how much of which ones to do.
Right. Right. So basically, uh, whether it's the three twenty-five or the four oh five, that, that would be approved. Um, given the amount of money, we'd look at the roads, the length, and the surface treatment that we would do, uh, and through engineering, come up with an estimate. Um, we would like to tackle the roads that are in, in the worst shape, do those first. But, uh, you know, the, the three surface, or the three treatment types would be, um, one that I want to explore next year is, is micro-surfacing. Um, you know, there are three roads to consider. We have Nichols, the full length of Nichols, uh, Winnaco Road from Bridge to Squaw, that would be a candidate, and Birch Haven. So those are, would be my three candidates for that. And then we have probably about seven to eight roads that are, are good candidates for milling overlay, similar to what we did this past year. Um, so there's either a full-depth mill option or a partial mill. Uh, this past year, we did a partial mill. Um, and that's driven basically by the, uh, the amount of potholing and how deep the potholes go. So, um, you know, there's the, there's that black chip seal that the city's done in the past. Um, not really looking at doing that right now. The micro-surfacing, I think, is a better option. It's a, it's similar. It's a flexible surface treatment that dries within one hour. Uh, there's no cleanup cost. Um, you know, you don't have to go back for a number of weeks and, and street sweep. You're not dragging the black chip everywhere. Um, you can lay that down anywhere from three eighths to an inch thick. So, um, it's a good, a good surface treatment.
Alder Bussey?
Uh, you, you had mentioned that there are like seven or eight spots where we still have the cast iron, um, that eventually is gonna have to be replaced. Are any of the proposed surfacing treatments gonna affect those areas?
I try not to do any milling overlay on areas that we do have cast iron main. Um, I don't want to stick the money in there to have it tore up, you know, in the short, short term.
Good. Thank you.
Further questions?
Can I, yeah.
Alder Thomas?
I, I had trouble hearing a couple of questions. So if I ask you to repeat something, Dan, I apologize. Um, first of all, I, I sort of have a question for Alderman Wood, which says, why eighty thousand? Why not forty thousand? Why not sixty thousand? Why not fifty thousand? I, I want to know how we come up with the eighty. But, but my other concern, Dan, is, is. But, but my other concern, Dan, is, is Public Works Committee and I and all of us want to be responsible in maintaining our roads. But it strikes me that this proposal utilizes a lot of resources, both staff and money. And while we want to do the responsible thing, my question to you is, would you judge, and I'm going to put you on the spot, sorry about that, uh, would you judge that the amount that is coming forward, um, the unamended version for street maintenance, is a responsible amount to do what is necessary for this year? Or do we, do we need the money, or would it be nice to have, does it fit in the nice-to-have category?
Well, I think what it does is give us another road to do. Um, you know, 80,000, um, I don't want to guess off the top of my head how much that'll get us, but, um, it, it'd probably get us another road of, uh, partial depth mill and overlay, or possibly another road for micro-surfacing. So we're, we're just basically adding one more road to what we would probably do.
And if I could sort of jump in on, maybe answer both of your questions, Alderman Thomas. Um, I think about the sixth page into my, the PowerPoint, there's a caption of 2014 maintenance candidates, um, that shows how I came up with the 80,000, which was basically that looking at the roads that Dan had identified as candidates, the three different treatments, and the estimated cost for those, came up to $403,600. And I sort of just bumped it up to 405 to give a, I don't know, because it was an even number, I suppose. But anyway, that would be a deficit of 78,600. So that's where I got the number. Um, in terms of whether the proposed is responsible or not, I, I, I think it is responsible. I think, though, I guess I would say that my proposal is more responsible because, you know, we did, and as I said, quite appropriately, reduce the amount of roads we did in the five years of the Manona Drive project, because we were spending so much on that. Um, but as a result, we also fell behind on what we were doing on the local roads. So I think it's appropriate, in the first year after the Manona Drive, that we bump up the road maintenance budget, um, pretty significantly. And I, with response, so I, I think, and you know, we'll see what we do in future years, but any year that we have one of the big road reconstructions that includes replacing cast iron water main, we're not going to be doing too much other road maintenance, um, just because of the cost. And Dan can, I guess, can address this, but my impression is that providing more money so that instead of doing, say, 8,000 feet of micro-surfacing, you can do 10,400 feet, isn't going to add much to his workload. That, you know, providing a little extra length or identifying another street to do, um, that's my assumption, I guess, but I would ask Dan to react to that.
No, that, that's correct, Alderman Wood. It's just-
This is my, 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 my reaction. I love the notion of putting more money into the roads, but I'm also pretty committed to having what I would call a balanced budget this year, in that we don't spend more than we pay off. And I think there, that some of my colleagues may share that same thought. So I might be willing to say, if the difference between what we can cut and what we add, as long as it keeps us under the other, but I think that we haven't gone far enough to know how, what the bottom line is going to be.
Sorry, you're asking to wait on this one towards the end? Alderman, Alderman Thomas?
Yeah, we can't keep, he was wondering if you're asking to push this one to the end too, and I guess, I guess we just can't keep pushing all these down, so we're going to-
No, I have four.
First, it was Alder Spate, then Alder Bussie. Alder Spate?
I, I just wanted to speak as someone who's a co-chair of the Public Works Committee. I had asked, uh, Mr. Stefani about, you know, whether or not we were spending enough when we were reviewing the budget at the committee. And I mean, you did give, I think, a measured, uh, an appropriate response. You said, "Well, you know, we're, we have limited resources," and I, and so I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, basically, you said, "Well, you know, we're, we're doing a responsible amount of maintenance." Could we do more? Yes. But it seemed like a fair number, what the, what the committee budget was. Having said that, I, I just personally have concerns about what's going on with Nichols Road right now, which is another one of our major thoroughfares. And I know you've assured me that it's in better shape than it may appear to me, but I bike on that road a lot. So my tires aren't quite as big, and my shock absorbers aren't as good. And, um, you know, that road, I think, is going to look like Dean looked this last year within the next three years. It just, my layman's view. I'm, um, and so my gut here is that we should prepare for these sorts of things, and we should be doubling down on road maintenance, because I do think we have deferred a lot of this investment. And it's going to come, I mean, none of us at this table are going to be able to get away with neglecting our main roads, but for so long, so.
Alder Bussie?
I, I share Alder Woods' comments about, you know, we, we put off due to Manona Drive. And also, there's going to be a large expenditure, potentially 18 or so, and, you know, and we may end up deferring streets then too, when we start to pay for that. So I, I'd support the, um, the change that's before us now, and wouldn't be opposed to voting on it immediately.
Alder Holmquist?
I just have one question for Finance Director regarding, what was the reduced, or what was the cost that we spent on road maintenance in the last few years while the Drive project was going on?
Um, I don't have the exact number, but it was less than 125. It was around 2125, 175. And 2012, when you passed that, it was about 75.
Yeah. I, I did send you that in the email, though.
Yeah. I'm sure it was the biggest review of this time, it was 200,000.
Okay. Thanks. This year?
Yeah. Yeah, 200,000.
All right. What is the will of this body? Alder Thomas has asked that this be delayed to the end?
I'm probably willing to vote.
Okay. She's willing to vote, so Alder would.
One, one question I get, just to make sure I'm correct on this. Mark, we're, with the proposed capital budget before we made any amendments, we were going to spend $110,000 more than we were paying back, is that, as, not spending, borrowing, 110,000. So that, in regard to Alder Thomas's target of getting a balance, we need, we would need to cut a cumulative total of 110,000.
Correct.
Okay. I would just note the-
All right. So after we take this vote, we'll ask for a toast board from Havana. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes. So the 110 differential, where are we now, Mark?
Oh, the three amendments that passed so far, we just, 30,000.
So we're down 30. All right. Moving on to item 15-5, the amendment is to reduce the capital budget for squad cars from four to two squad cars, brought forth by Alder's Bussie. And Holmquist, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval? Second.
His motion's second. Alder Bussie?
I, um, based on the worksheets that the chief gave us, uh, there were two vehicles. There was the Ford Escape 2006. Um, and in looking at the score sheet under condition, uh, it said that on a scale of one to five, five, uh, is used to indicating very poor condition or high expected maintenance cost. This scored as a one. And then, um, also repair costs, um, and it's similar where a five is assigned to a truck with a, um, life to date, repair cost equal to or greater than the vehicle's original purchase price. It scored as a one. So the ongoing, and within the past year, um, we spent-
Zero. That's the life of the vehicle.
Right. Okay. Sorry, sir?
That's the whole life. That's the whole life.
Oh, yeah. Right, right. But, um, back in November of 13, we spent 600 bucks on, on the car. We didn't, we haven't spent anything on it since then. The total score fell into the 23 to 27 point range, scoring a 24, which is rated as qualified for replacement. Um, where the other, where the two vehicles that I'm suggesting get replaced, fell into the need immediate attention. The second vehicle basically scored the same in those two categories. It had a one in both. And in the past year, we had some minor 23, 25, 300, total of 377 bucks that we've. So I figure that that's less than a month's worth of debt service. I'm trying to do the home budget test, um, thinking we could narrow it down by two vehicles. I asked the chief if we did do that, how much he'd need in the budget, and with equipment and things that were needed. Um, he said that, while the original budget was 140, he said at 86, if we were doing just two vehicles to properly equip, equip them, 86,000 would meet those needs. So that's where the math came from and the reason behind, behind the process.
And Alder Wood, I noted that you had included a PowerPoint for this item too?
Okay. I feel indulged with this. This should be pretty brief, I think.
Is it up, Will?
Should be.
Okay. If you guys can bring the PowerPoint up to the screens, please.
There it is.
Thank you.
It is, um, okay. So this is first, the mayor's budget proposing four police vehicles. This was sort of my reaction. I suspect it was a lot of people's initial reaction was, holy smokes, or holy moly macaroni, as my granddaughter says.
You can take the screen down now. We're done with the presentation.
Actually, I wanted, Alder Thomas, can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear me, but yes.
Okay. I will try to get a little closer to the mic. Anyway, so that was, that was, you know, I started looking at this, that was kind of my, my reaction was, I was a surprise, and wanted to get more data on it, but I didn't think I would support four vehicles. So just quickly, there's 12 vehicles in the fleet. Over the last seven years, we bought 11 vehicles, although we actually, there were only nine budgeted, I think, and the chief actually was able to get some good deals one year and got it up to 11. Um, there's been two years in that period of the last seven years where we bought no vehicles. So that's an average of one and a half vehicles per year, which takes eight years to replace the entire fleet. Um, I guess I should just say initially that the reason I end up supporting this is that I think right now at the level that we're buying vehicles, which is one and a half per year over the last eight, seven years, is that we're waiting until we have significant maintenance problems to replace the vehicles, which, in my opinion, um, in fact, so, to such an extent that some, the vehicles are actually out of service for a significant period of time, sometimes repeatedly with the same vehicle. I guess, it's my opinion that if you, that we're looking at from a, the home budget sort of standpoint, that if you have the financial capacity to replace vehicles before they have severe maintenance issues, that is the smart thing to do financially in the long term, because the, there's, the, the cost curve for maintenance, maintenance cost isn't a straight line. Once you hit a certain point, they go up at a very fast rate. And so clearly, the city has the financial capacity to replace the vehicles at a rate fast enough that we're replacing them before they experience severe mechanical problems. We have a more reliable fleet, and the long-term cost, I think, will be lower. So just quickly, if we bought 15, or bought four vehicles this year, that would be 15 in eight years. That would bring us up to about 1.9 cars a year. That'd take us a little less than six and a half years to replace the entire fleet. And then if in future budgets, we just did two cars per year, we'd eventually, we'd get to where it'd be at six years to replace the entire fleet, which seems to be sort of the point at which we are replacing vehicles before they experience severe mechanical issues. And I think the two vehicles that Alder Bussie was referring to, they haven't had the severe mechanical problems yet, but I think the chief may actually have some additional information about one of them is starting to have problems. So if we did three vehicles this year instead of four, that would get us to just under seven years to replace the fleet. And I didn't do the math, I didn't do the math for just keeping it at two, but that would be 13 vehicles in eight years, which, um, would be one, about 1.6 cars a year. So it's probably up closer to eight years, which I think with police vehicles, you might be able to hold on to a personal vehicle for eight years and not have severe mechanical issues, but I don't think you can, excuse me, with police vehicles. So this slide just shows, again, sort of the, why I support buying four vehicles, because, um, this year we're replacing, uh, we've had two vehicles that need immediate replacement, that's 17% of the fleet, um, that have had high maintenance costs, which takes up also the mechanics time, and I'm sure we get a lot less in resale for them. So I don't think I need to go through that final slide, well, the next to final slide. But again, there's, the smiley face would at least be for the police chief and this police department. I would have had, added that at the top of the slide, except my PowerPoint skills are less than optimal, so.
That would look nice with the pink uniform shirt, yellow face. Further discussion? So that was a backhanded compliment, Alder Wood, to the mayor's thought of four cars?
Oh, no. Well, I should say that by the time I got through the process, I had some smelling salts.
You're brilliant.
I was, thought, that was an amazing, oh, brilliant.
Alder Holmquist?
I would ask at some point, we get the chief to come up and see if he had-
Okay.
Any additional information.
Chief? Alder Holmquist?
I'll wait.
Okay.
You look natty this evening, chief, if I didn't tell you that.
Natty. Thank you. Um, well, there are cupcakes there, and if this pass, I will make a significant donation, so the council will each have a cupcake. I was mentioning to Alderman Wood, you know, I, this is not anything I expected, really, after I saw the, the, the proposal to cut the two cars. So I was very grateful that he did that. It wasn't by, uh, it was on his own, so thank you, Doug. Two of the cars obviously have to be replaced, the two Mark squads are in extremely poor shape. Uh, that, that one car, Squad 111, which we replaced the engine on, is in the shop again. It, it really hasn't been used since late July, so we really pushed it way beyond its limit. And the effect of that is that when you do that, as we had like, uh, those two main cars out of service, uh, you're starting to put more wear and tear on cars that should not be driven as police cars. And, uh, these two other cars, the Ford Escape, um, right now, that one needs some significant work on it. Uh, the last time it was diagnosed, we thought it was front wheel bearings, but if you drive in it, I was trying to get people to go for a ride, um, it's like driving a tank down the road, among other things, that need to be fixed. And the other one, the Ford Explorer, uh, that's been used sort of as a, a traffic car, and the transmission on that one's starting to go on it too. So that's the, the problem when you start using cars not designed for police work, for police work. So those, uh, those two, once we get 111 back on the street, are probably going to be, once they get a, a chance to get into the shop, the next ones go in. chance to get into the shop, the next ones go in.
Before you, before the chief leaves, when you, we were talking before the meeting, you described the transmission in that one of the marginal vehicles as being, when you shifted, there was sort of a clunk?
Right, when you go into reverse, it has a big clunk, and you put it in drive, and it has another big clunk, so there's a, there's a problem with that squad right now.
Alder Spate?
Chief, can you speak to some of the maintenance bills that you've had on some of these vehicles that, you know, go one year too long, and then we're, you know, we have it in the shop, and, I mean, what are some of these bills like?
Well, the two, the two primary ones are the Chevy Tahoe and the Ford Crown Vic. Those are the two mark squads. Those are the two that, that have gone well past a hundred thousand miles, and as I said, the one Crown Vic, we put a used new engine in it, and it's still not functional. The Tahoe is now having problems with its four-wheel drive unit, and, you know, each time one of these things occurs, like with the four-wheel drive, you're looking, you know, six, seven, eight hundred dollars. The, I don't know what the cost is going to be on the transmission on this Explorer, but that's probably going to be significant. And the Escape, which used to be the administrator's car, that, we bought that for the city use, so we're like the fourth, fourth person or agency to use it since, since we've gotten it. So it's, it hasn't really been babied much, and it's starting to show some wear and tear.
I guess I would just make a comment, too. I mean, as a small business owner with a fleet of vehicles, I, I feel your pain, because I've got a bunch of older vans that I'd really like to replace, that right now I don't feel I can afford to do it, but I've had some major maintenance in this last year, and it's a gamble, I mean, it's, it's hard to know what the right answer to the question is, but it's definitely a gamble to have old vehicles out on the road.
And we usually, we try to, first we'll go to public works, and if our mechanic has time, if he's not working on lawn mowers, dump trucks, depending on the type of season, we'll sneak those in. And a lot of times, it's the patrol vehicles will take priority over the, the unmarked cars, so those sit way in back, and, and then the problems start compounding. And if the mechanic can't fix it, then we go to a private maintenance place to get it worked on, and with these Dodges, which I, you know, sorry Dodge, but I'm never going to buy another one if I can help it. The Dodgers, they've just been terrible, and we'll, we'll get something diagnosed at the local repair shop, and he'll say, well, you have to take it to the dealership. Now you're spending three hundred bucks to get it diagnosed, and another seven hundred bucks to get it fixed, and it just, just keeps going.
Further questions? Alder Holmquist?
Thanks for the additional information, because some of the condition reports on these two particular vehicles doesn't necessarily represent some of the additional information regarding the transmission issues. I wouldn't get that from reading a one underneath the condition or repair costs, although it might not have had costs up to this point. It doesn't get captured in, in here for further analysis when we're digging deep, trying to look for potential savings. One thing that kind of jumped out at me after reading the, the slides from Alderman Wood and kind of relooking at some of this information and hearing what you've said, and that tells me that there's really two different tiers of vehicles that you have. You have vehicles that are, are driven hard and may need to be replaced much more frequently than other vehicles. And if we point out the most costly vehicle right now to you is a two thousand and ten vehicle. It's been out of service for almost a whole year. It's got the most mileage in your fleet, and it's the newest vehicle. And so what I'm getting at here is I, I don't think it can be broken down to, there's twelve vehicles, how, you know, how can you mathematically make this work? I believe that there are some vehicles that you need to have a certain level of reliability, and they may need to be replaced more frequently. And there are a set of other vehicles that, although they're important, they don't meet the same level of requirements as the other vehicles. And if they're out on a repair, a repair that's longer, no car should be out for a year, but if they're out for repair, it's less detrimental to the department and your functions. And so, so with that, when I look at the two cars that are, are indicated for replacement, I have no question in my mind that these, these two marked cars need to be replaced. Hearing some of this additional information, I would want to, to either hear more or consider more regarding these two unmarked cars. But just taking data to make decisions, and it's difficult for me when you're one point over the cusp of this car's good to this car needs to be replaced, and it's tough to kind of make some of these decisions when we have a, a large packet that we're really trying to make decisions of how we're spending people's money. And so that's where I can, I continue to be on this fence of how do we weigh this out for a car replacement? And I guess I'd prefer to hear some more questions or?
Or we could get off the fence.
I've, I've made my point.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's something more someone wants to add, I would ask that the clerk please, yes, chief?
Well, in, in a perfect world, what I had tried to do through the years is replace two marked cars a year, and then one marked and one unmarked car the next year. And when we started skipping years, that throws that whole schedule out of whack. So now, if, even if we were to get back to that schedule, you know, you're going to have an unmarked car that's a two thousand and five that is in line behind these other two cars. It's going to be, you know, probably two thousand and seventeen or so, or later, before that car gets replaced. So you keep putting this off, and in the meantime, when something breaks, we have to drive something. And when you start throwing the unmarked cars that have high miles in patrol, they start getting beat up, and they don't last very long. So that's my final.
And just to add, you know, we lost our, our bicycle officer now, so we'll have more people in cars, so.
It's true.
Consider that, Alder Wood.
I would just note the two of the, the two years in the lap, since two thousand and eight, or between two thousand and eight and two thousand and fourteen, the two years that we had no cars authorized for, for purchase, no cars author, or purchase, were two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen. So it's three years, you know, sort of closer to the end of this cycle, and I think that's kind of what we're seeing now, why I think there's a need to spend more this year. But we haven't heard from Alder Thomas. I'm curious if she has any comments. Hello?
No, I think it's confused, I, I think it's, I think it's a toss-up. I think, I think one has to be cut. I think that, I haven't heard from Alderman O'Connor either, but, you know, I, you take a risk if you, if you cut, if we cut two. Clearly, I think we need to cut one, and I'm sitting here wrestling with myself about what the right thing to do is.
Alder O'Connor, would you care to join in?
Well, I was wondering about just cutting one rather than two.
Okay. I would be happy to entertain Alder Wood.
As a procedural possibility, we could vote on the current amendment, or current amendment, which we'll leave it at four. Well, I don't, if somebody wants, I guess, yeah, we could either do that vote, and then if somebody wants to offer an amendment to do three, we could take that up on the floor, or we could just, if there's another amendment.
I would prefer to, if we're going to take it to three, have that, yes.
You said it would be for three, you'd need an extra twenty-seven with the equipment. Is that in the email? Does that sound right?
Yes, I, I know when I sent you that email, I threw out a number, I think I was at home and I was looking at my phone, so I probably didn't have the right numbers. I was coming up with probably one thirteen, because we could probably do an unmarked a little bit cheaper than a marked car, so I was thinking right, right around in that twenty-seven to thirty thousand range.
So at a hundred and thirteen, so that'd be?
Cutting twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven.
To cut one vehicle.
So as maker, as one of the sponsors of the amendment, if we, I'm proposing a amendment to the amendment, or revision to the amendment.
Yep. Why don't you just pull your amendment if you're going to make a new one?
And make a new one? Okay, that's fine.
Is the second okay with that?
That's fine.
All right. Yep, you'd like to make an?
Like to make a fifteen-point-five A, which would be to decrease the squad car plus equipment by twenty-seven thousand, leaving a budget of one hundred and thirteen thousand. Second?
Motion second. Is there a discussion on this revised amendment? Alder Wood?
One last comment. I guess if we, if this amendment passes, I would hope that we would also plan to, to buy three cars next year, so that we're sort of catching up, but instead of doing it in one year, doing it over two.
I will try to remember that. And I'm sure the chief will remind me. Five. Further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll? This is to do three squads rather than four.
Alder Wood?
No.
Alder Spate?
No.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Yes.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye. Motion passes. Where are we at, Mark?
Uh, fifteen to fifty-seven.
All right, moving on to item fifteen.
I doubt it.
Excuse me. Item fifteen dash six is to move replacement of the nineteen ninety-five plow truck to the two thousand and sixteen capital budget brought forth by Alders Thomas, Spate, and Bussie. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second? Motion second, Alder Thomas?
I talked, Dan and I talked about this, and, and if there was something they could hold off until next year, and he talked to the crew, and they, while they need the plow trucks, they also understand we have fiscal constraints and a rather healthy capital budget, so they said they could make do until next year. That, this would be the thing that they would hold off until next year.
Dan, are you nodding in agreement with Alder Thomas?
I am.
He is, all right. Alder Spate?
I just want to add to that, that I'll remind the council that we currently have in the budget building a cold storage building finally for, for public works that will allow us to get more years out of the vehicles we have. Probably doesn't include plow trucks, but it will allow the vehicles that are used primarily in the good weather to, to last longer and, and be exposed to less rust, so I think this amendment is consistent with that plan.
Alder Holmquist?
This one has me scratching my head a little bit, when we just talked about two police vehicles that were rated twenty-three and twenty-four, although my guess is the condition would be updated and they might score a bit higher. This item scored a thirty-three, and it's intended to plow our streets to allow our police cars to be able to drive down. And although I'm, I'm willing to listen to more information on why this can be held off, and that, that would be helpful for me to understand. Dan?
I guess I was expecting the question after the October sixth meeting, so I pulled the crew the very next day. We have seven plow trucks. If one goes down, we're still able to cover our, our city streets. Average snowstorm between six and eight hours to, to fully clear the roads. We've got three leaf trucks, and when one goes down, we really feel it out there. We, we get backed up, so I guess I posed the question, if we had to choose one, which one do we want to, you know, get this year, and which one are we willing to put off? And, and I think that's pretty much what the crew backed up, is that if we are down to two leaf collection trucks, the, the customers, the residents, they, they know it, and we have a short window to get all the leaves. You know, if we have a plow truck go down, I think we're, we're still, we're still covered.
Alder Wood and Alder Spate?
Question for, for Dan. What are the, we have seven plow trucks, so if this one goes down, we have six. That's good enough. What's the condition of the next worst plow truck?
This, this one would be the last old truck that we have. The, the other trucks are in pretty good condition. You know, it's, one goes down, we, we pick up the slack with the other, the other six, but I don't think we're due, I don't think we're due for another plow truck for, for a while.
Okay, I guess what I'm, sorry, what I was getting at was that how likely, or what's the magic number where we won't be able to cover all the streets, and how likely is that to happen? And it sounds like six is good enough. I don't know if five is good enough, but that it's unlikely that we'd have two down at once.
Uh, it ha, it has happened in the past. I mean?
And what happens then?
Where we have two trucks down, but, you know, the, the extent of the repairs, I mean, they're, they're, I don't want to call them minor, but they're minor. Ron's able to, to get them fixed in, in pretty quick time. You know, it all depends on the size of the storm as well. If we have a twelve-inch snowstorm and we have two go down, you know, then, then we're out there, you know, a couple hours longer than what we would have.
So it increases our operational costs for overtime?
Right. It all depends what time the storm is. I mean, there's, yeah.
Alder Spate?
Now, Mike, I wanted to just kind of comment to Alder Holmquist. I mean, part of my thinking on this, and the snow plows are important when we have a snowstorm, but snowstorms are not something that happen every day. And I in no, no means mean to diminish the value of public works and the snow fleet, but from how I weigh these two things, the police are there twenty-four, seven, you know, trying to keep those kids from wandering out into the street, you know, on top of all the other issues they've got to deal with. And I think it's the right choice that we would forego a snow plow relative to the police vehicle. And I, I think that's just part of the calculus we have to make as a council. But, but it is true, we're ultimately going to have to replace that snow plow, too. But thank you for offering it up.
Short follow-up, and, and the two, the two marked cars were indicated in replacement immediate, and it was up in this level. The two that were falling marginal originally were two that were unmarked cars, and although they, they're used for other duties, I would equate that more similar to a plow truck versus a marked squad. So that's where some of that weighing came into this, and I'm not indicating, you know, let's, let's jump on this. It just got me curious of why, why this item, when I know these issues exist, and I, and I want to make decisions based on data, not just, oh, we do two cars every year. That doesn't make any sense. I want data to, to drive the decision. So that was my question.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, further questions? Alder Wood?
One other comment, kind of prompted by Alder Spate's comments, and I think he makes a good point about the police vehicles being out there every day of the year, twenty-four hours a day. The snow plows are obviously used, you know, on a, depends on what kind of winter we have, how many times they're used. However, when we get a big snowstorm, it is both a public convenience and a public safety issue that the streets get plowed appropriately right away, so that we don't end up with, you know, bad, snow-compacted streets for the rest of the winter, so. Just more, I guess. That's all I had.
Point well taken. Further discussion? Hearing none? Yep, Alder Thomas?
I have great faith in Dan Stefani and the crew, and, and while they can't predict, they have said they can make it work and maintain the level of service that this community they have said they can make it work and maintain the level of service that this community is accustomed to. And I have great faith that they will, um, do what it takes to do that.
Mr. Stefani is beaming based upon your comments, Alder Thomas, so...
Keep it up.
He's certainly appreciative of that goodwill. Better not snow to them.
And they're a good crew, and they have said they will make it work. It's not just Dan, it's the crew.
You're right.
Yep.
All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Nay.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Nay.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes, and the savings is? 2:22. We can stop here then, I guess. All right. All right, moving on to 15-7 is to change the funding source for the Broadway light poles from general obligation bonds to TIF funding. This is being brought forth by Alders Thomas, Spate, and Bussie. Is there a motion for approval?
All approval.
Second.
Is motion second. Alder Thomas?
I have a question for Dan. I, Dan, I thought that you said you got an updated cost estimate that took it to 42,000.
42,200, that's correct.
Do we need to amend the amount that we are putting in the TIF?
Yes.
This says 30,000.
So, I mean, the, the amendment made it in there, but I, I, the price increase didn't, so, um, but yeah, we, we do need 42,200 for the project.
All right. Is there a motion to amend the capital budget, the mayor's capital budget, from 30,000 to 42,200 dollars?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Why aren't we doing a roll call?
Should be a roll call to budget item.
Since we do-
Oh, it was about, okay, because it was a $12,000 difference, and I don't do roll calls at 12, but, but it's a budget item, so you're right. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate? Has left the room. Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now with the new amount, discussion?
Discussion?
Of, uh, moving it to, from general obligation to the original amendment. So discussion in the original amendment of moving it from GO bonds to TIF. Hearing none. Would the cli- clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Total? That's with 42,200 in there? Okay, I guess, yeah. All right. Item 15-8, the amendment is to add 4150 dollars, $4,150 for street signs, brought forth by Alders Thomas, Spate, and Bussie. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Um, this is actually was in the operating budget, um, and the feds are requiring that we replace our signs, and, um, the powers that we use out in the city, this is capital eligible, and we think it makes more sense to put it in capital and put it under the levy limits.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk, oh, Alder Holmquist?
I just have one-
Yep.
Point of clarification. If the light poles are TIF eligible, is there a reason that street signs wouldn't be?
They're not TIF eligible. They're just, for the whole city, you're replacing. Not related to a TIF to itself. You have to be, to be a TIF eligible cost has to be, um-
Benefit to that TIF only, what you've originally set it up. It's to benefit the whole city as a whole, not just that TIF as a whole.
Thanks. Answer your question?
Yep.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Motion carries. Guess that's all we have for the rest of the evening? With that, we'll move on to further, oh, excuse me, or, or, excuse me, cleared my throat. Uh, moving on to item 15-9, there's a motion to try to eliminate the dog park, being brought forth by Alders Thomas, Spate, and O'Connor.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Whoa. There's a motion in second. Discussion? Alder Spate?
I guess, as the guy that chaired the public hearing and then went straight to the hospital, I will, uh, speak on this first. Um, well, I do just want to say, Mr. Mayor, that I really commend you for your passion on this issue, and, um, there were a couple of things that you said at that public hearing and that you've said since, which really, uh, I, I thought were important, uh, and, and I want to comment on those before I explain why I, I don't think the dog park is necessarily the answer. Uh, you had said that one of the main reasons that the dog park, uh, would, would be a, a great thing for this community, and I do think it has the potential to be a great thing, is it would help encourage people to come out and walk around and get to know each other better, that it would build community. And I was struck by that, because when I think about that one neighborhood where we were talking about a dog park across from the beach in Waterman Park, uh, I think that's one of the most dangerous places to walk in the city of Monona. Similar to the comments that were made tonight about Bridge Road, I think that the engineering of Winnequa Street, combined with people on bikes and people walking, and then maybe a lot of people walking their dogs, would have been a recipe for disaster. That said, I think as a city, we have the ability to make it possible for people to go out and walk their dogs and walk their children and bike with their children, and hopefully get around and get to know each other better. So I, I think that, um, your intent was good. And as we know, the community wasn't willing to put a dog park in that location, and coming up with the option of the Public Works Fimrite location, I think unfortunately would not lead to people walking to the park. It would lead to people driving to a dog park. And so that bothered me, because there are a lot of dog parks they could drive to already. And the second reason that I was troubled by this was that the Parks, uh, budget and the Parks staff really don't have the resources to care for another park. And so that was another reason that the Parks Committee voted against this item, and, um, that I ultimately had to side with them in saying that we probably are going to need to add more staff to the Parks Department, if we want to do something like this. So those are my reasons, uh, for being against this, but, uh, I still think it has the potential to be a great idea.
Further questions? Alder O'Connor?
I would just second what Alderman Spate said, and it's not that I don't support a dog park. I just don't think that we've got a good spot for one in Monona that's a decent size, that's in a location that people can easily walk to. So that's why I'm supporting this.
Alder Wood?
I said, I, uh, support the idea of a dog park, and I don't, I think one of the problems that I had, and I, so I guess what I'm saying, because I'm probably going to support this amendment, but I would not give up on the idea of a dog park, even if it goes down, gets taken out of this budget. But I think, unfortunately, I think the process kind of went backwards, where, where sites were identified before the whole question of do we want a dog park in the city? And in particular, what are the minimum size requirements? What would the maintenance cost be? And not, you know, to have it actually analyzed by staff. So, you know, how much, would, how much time would it really take? How much time has it taken in other communities? And I, I agree. I think the Fimrite location is, would really not accomplish what we want with a dog park in, in Monona, because it's, um, just under two miles from City Hall. It's kind of isolated in a way. I mean, some of the people down in that, on the Fimrite, the residential areas off of Fimrite Drive might very well walk to it, but no other part of the city would, I don't believe, would walk to it. So I, I think that if we're going to have a dog park, it needs to be sited in close, in the central part of the city. And I think there are a couple of locations that would be ideal. I think that if you have, but clearly, I think whichever one was identified, you would have some opposition from the neighbors, as we saw with the, um, the Waterman Park location. But I think if we have gone through an analysis of how big of an area does, does it need, how much staffing, and, and more importantly, what has the, the experience been of other communities with the neighborhood dog parks? Because I attended most of that, the public hearing, and I frankly think people knew what they were against it, but, and they, and they offered, you know, their, their reasons for it. But I suspect that if we looked at the actual experience from other communities, that the impact of a dog park on the livability of the neighborhood, of the, you know, residences right near it, that the impact is going to be pretty small, in fact, and that some of the fears, haven't proven, you know, to be true in the experience of other locations. I guess I kind of liken it to the skate park. When we went through that process of locating the skate park, there was a lot of support for it, but there was also people who, you know, who wanted it, who were concerned about putting it at the location where it ended up next to the tennis courts by the pool. Because of, and there was a proposal to put it instead out at Ahuska, which was sort of similar to this locating the dog park out at the Public Works Garage. There's a lot of concern about noise, about what kind of activities would be going on with, you know, drinking or smoking or using of drugs and all sorts of horribles that were going to happen. And none of that really, to any great extent, has proven true. I'm sure there have been some occasional incidences where those problems occurred, but very minimal, and so I, and it's, you know, I don't know, when I've gone to, to dog parks, you know, I just don't see what, what the problems really would be. In fact, I suspect more of the dog, um, what's, I can't think of an other word. Their dog droppings would be more likely to be picked up than they are right now. So I guess I would like us, like to see us kind of start over, which I know it's going to be hard to put the toothpaste back in the tube, but to start over, looking at, you know, like, as I've said, the size requirements, the rules, the regulations, et cetera, the, the time for the staff, and, and, you know, there's experience out there in a lot of places that have put in this residential neighborhood dog parks, so find out what, how that's gone, and, um, I think that might assuage some of the fears of the neighbors in those cases. And there is clearly a lot of support in the community for a dog park, as indicated by the sheet that you passed around of just, you know, people who came to that, that public meeting that spoke in favor of it, so.
Further discussion? Alder Bussie, would you take over as mayor?
Get a tight hold on that gavel, Alder Bussie.
Well, thanks for all the input. Appreciate it.
I wish I would have had people offering all this support for the last nine months. So, um, just to re, how we got to where that was. This came out of the, the, um, Walter, the strategic planning process, in terms of friendliness, the lack of friendliness, newcomers, and what initiatives there would be to help. So I took that seriously, and I've continued. I don't know that any of the other initiatives that have been said that were going to happen to welcome newcomers are happening, but I am trying to continue to do my part as mayor to welcome by personally getting together with people, taking people out to lunches, breakfast, newcomers, and doing that. And one of the things, as I researched, and I have the books here, and I've offered if anyone wants to read the books, and I've met with the authors of both of them. One is Thoughts on Building Strong Towns by Charles Marone, and more specifically For the Love of Cities by Peter Gai- Kajyama. And his book is What Makes People Love the Cities They Live In. And I would just like to reference the section that, pet love, are you a dog-friendly city? And just one paragraph is, "A study from the University of Western Australia found that pet owners scored higher than non-pet owners in key social capital metrics, including, including gaining trust, making connections, and helping out neighbors." Dog parks are among the most pub, used, among the most used public amenities and are places where social capital is created as we meet our neighbors. Foot traffic in dog parks prevents also the areas where they are loc, where they are located from becoming areas where antisocial or criminal activities congregate. And he has several further paragraphs on that. "I've received over the last two years several letters, including from Natasha Greif. I've been proud, the, a proud Monona resident since we bought our house here three years ago and love living here. For a place that has so many lovely recreational areas, one amenity is glaringly absent, a dog park. There are a lot of dog folk in town, and we all have to take our dogs to the dog parks in Madison, which is technically a no-no since we are not Madison residents. It would be fantastic to have a dog park Monona could call its own. Residents would no longer have to bend the rules to let their dogs run free, and Monona would have yet another quality of life feather to stick in his cap." Candace Verberg. "My question to you is, do you think it would be possible for Monona to have a dog park?" And then talks about different areas. So, and I shared with you of what was a very difficult night. And yes, Alder Wood, the process perhaps was not the smoothest process. I did not plan on opening this Pandora's Box. I did not think it would be, because I never, ever thought that we could backdoor and move into a neighborhood park. And as much as Alder Spate says we should keep this idea alive, it's never going to be alive. There was no will on the part of the Parks Department that night to tackle that, and I don't blame anyone that, no one wants a dog park in an established neighborhood. Again, this is the first I've heard tonight, the difficulty of maintenance. I've met with staff how many times? I, I mean, a lot of times in the last year or so. Someone used, seemed to have information the mayor didn't have in terms of the difficulty in maintenance and that they didn't have the staff. It was actually, looked to be very minimal usage in the staff. In terms of the dollars, it originally started in the first pass in the budget, much higher than I thought it needed to be. And I have the quote that Mr. Stefani, um, when I asked just for a general to try to figure this out from Struck and Irwin Fence, to do this, to install 780 feet of five-foot-tall commercial chain-linked fence, would be $13,500. So in my mind, this has always been about a $20,000 investment. You have 15 names of residents who came to what was not a pro-dog park night. It was one about don't put it in my backyard night, and there were still 15 people that were supportive and wanted to be there. And I'm sure if we really went out and asked, I think it would be. And I'm sure if we really went out and asked, I think it would be. In terms of the amount of dollars, of all the things we spend capital dollars on, I think for what could be gained here, I think this is pennies, pennies on the dollars of a multimillion-dollar budget. And I'm, I'm the first to not want to waste money, but I don't feel for any matter, I would not have put the time and effort into this this year if I felt this was a waste of time and effort. So what would happen? What's the worst that will happen? The worst that will happen is we find people don't use it. So what happened out of that? We have chain-link fence, five-foot chain-link fence around the Public Works Garage. Mr. Stefani has said he can use that in other projects, that it would not be for naught, and it could then be used, perhaps that land will be used. I hear nothing, and no one has ever brought forth a reason to use that land. It's nice land. There is more than adequate parking. You can fit over 30 different cars between, on, on-street parking there and at the Edna Taylor parking lot. So all these reasons I've heard, I've found to be quite suspect. So I know it's going to go down. It's not going to come back anywhere else. I will continue to push for it. I don't know what we're going to research, Alder Wood. I've offered to take people down to Broome Street. I was down at Broome Street last night, or last Friday night, in not, what was inclement weather. There were seven dogs in there. I went and talked to the owners. They love that park. That's less than two-thirds the size of the Femrite Park. It's a heavily used. Yes, it's, it's a more walkable because there's not parking there, but I think this is truly one of those. If they build it, they will come. So I've, this has not been, this has been probably one of, I've done a lot of screwy things since I've been mayor and will probably continue. This is not one I put into my silliness camp, but this has been a painful, difficult, frustrating, frustrating. And if this goes down, I'm highly disappointed. Thank you. Good job.
Further discussion?
Doug?
Oh, thank you.
Alder Wood?
Just quickly to respond to your, your question about what else we could study. Um, when this was coming up before the Parks Board, I did a little research on the Internet, and there is, I mean, there's a, a wealth of information out there about some of the processes that people, that other communities have used and how they develop standards and so forth. So I think there is some, you know, fairly readily available information that could be captured about, um, well, both the process and the, you know, the size and the rules and regulations and so forth, and, and the location of it. And you'll, I think, a quick look that it's not uncommon for it to be a politically-charged issue. So your experience is not, not, not pleasant, but not unusual either, so. So I'm going to offer, I would like, move to amend this, to retain the money in the budget, but eliminate the identification of a specific location for it, which would, and instead that we would, okay, that, that's the amendment, is, is to keep the money in the budget, but eliminate the identification of the location.
Just one point of clarification on that. The budgeted amount, the fencing amount was for three sides of fencing. So if it would happen to go somewhere else, so the money may need to change.
Okay. I'm going to leave it at the, the amount that it is, and if it needs more, would need more later, um, we could add some to that.
So do you?
I would support that.
Okay, there's a motion to amend, the amended budget motion, that is to hold this as a financial placekeeper until additional study is done. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
Alder O'Connor?
Are you saying that we would borrow this money and just not spend it?
No, I mean-
So you didn't decide something this year? I mean, what do you mean by a placeholder in this budget?
Well, um, I think the, the, the value of keeping the money in there, and we could keep less in there, but I think if we just take it out, it's fairly, I think it's going to become a dead issue that nobody, that, you know, the Parks Board may not be interested in, in bringing back the, the Parks Director, you know, he's got other things to do, and if the council just plain old votes it down, then why would he spend any more time on it? So I guess the, the purpose I see of it is to provide direction to staff, but this is something that should continue to be pursued, and direction to the, to the Parks Board and anyone else, but it's not a dead issue and that we would like to see it continue.
But you do mean that we would borrow the money?
Yeah, I think, it looked like the Finance Director had something to say about that.
I can just throw this out there. I've been working with the mayor and Pat regarding the 2015 operating budget. We will have a larger fund balance. So if you don't want to borrow the money and you want to set that money aside because it's a one-time cost, we can set that money aside on the operating side so you don't accumulate interest on there. That's something to think about, I guess, if you don't want to borrow it. I mean, because I wouldn't recommend borrowing and sitting it for a couple of years. I would go the opposite, the opposite route.
I would concur. You'll be seeing, we have a very substantial, even in my standards of maintaining a high fund balance. Yeah, we're, we're considerably over what I feel is necessary, and I would think most of you will feel necessary, so that could fit into that.
Yeah, I, I see, I see the point, kind of, of doing that, but if, but then if we really were going to spend this, you know, if we did go through the process and identified someplace, it's sometime, you know, in 2015, are we going to use fund balance instead of capital borrowing? It seems a little odd, since this is clearly a capital project, but.
I would defer to Mark in terms of how to best handle that, if.
I mean, it's just, it's an option, I mean, if you're thinking about, because imagine time you go through this whole process, you're not talking about right away in the year. You're looking at the end of the year and, oh.
Pat?
What I would recommend, if there's, if, if that's the thought of this body, to keep it in there as a placeholder, that we, um, that you would go through this borrowing and if it wasn't used in 2015, you would decrease your borrowing by 25 in 2016.
All right. So we're still in discussion of the Second Amendment.
Question.
Yes, Alder Thomas?
Say we would borrow the money?
Yes.
We would borrow and then limit if it wasn't used. That would decrease the borrowing in 2016.
Alder Bussie?
Um, I support the idea of a dog park, but I don't support it at this location. And I'm wondering if we borrow the money? I mean, the point that Chad, you made is perfect, and walking to the dog park is ideal, but that's not going to happen here. And if we approve the money, then who decides, you know, what process will there be to decide where? Where a dog park would go?
If it's in a park, it has to be the Parks Board.
So it would fall back, so if we don't designate it specifically for this location, then it would go back to Parks to, that there's money available for this.
And just my observation is, it's not going to go. I mean, it was there, but there could be a better-
Alder, hold on, Alder Thomas, I'll come back to you second, Alder O'Connor first.
I don't know if I would say that I'm on the Parks Board also, that it definitely wouldn't go. And I agree with Alderman Wood's comments before, that I think we went at this backwards. We never should have started out with any kind of sites. Um, you know, we should have looked at more what kind of space we need and other factors that affect it before we started talking about sites. Then the next logical thing to do would be to look at possible sites. So, I mean, I can't speak for the Park Board. I, I think if we went through it in a, you know, we had a good process for, for thinking about it, I would think that it may possibly gain some support. I, I don't know. It's not that the Park Board is against dog parks at all. It's just that the concern is the, mainly the location, I think, so.
And I didn't mean to infer that, but there's no location. I've spent a lot of time on this, but I'm happy to try to, I will work with it.
But again, there might be some parts where if we actually had some numbers to look at and, you know, the area that would be good, you know, the space it would take up and that kind of thing, it's possible. I mean, I'm not guaranteeing there would be.
Alder Wood?
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, that's kind of my, my thought is that if you, especially if you have data that shows the experience of other communities, other cities, where they've put a dog park in, in a neighborhood residential area, then, you know, what, you know, what problems were there? And if it indicates that in general there aren't significant problems or even minor problems routinely, that, you know, that would, you know, give the Parks Board and the council some, you know, reason to support a dog park. I mean, there's going to be opposition to it from the neighbors, absolutely. I don't, I mean, not, that won't be unrealistic, you know, but sometimes the, you know, look at, have to look at the, the good of the overall community as opposed, you know, to, um, specific, um, neighbors.
Alder Thomas?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about two things. I remember when we talked about putting tennis courts down at Ahuska, and nobody said, people said, nobody will use them, and they're used all the time. So, so I understand the thing about if you build it, they will come. But at the meetings, which I sat there, I think 90% of the people said, you know, we don't want it in our neighborhood and, and we don't want to force it onto somebody else's neighborhood. So I'm not sure what Alder Wood is saying, where he thinks it could go, where it would be acceptable to the neighbors. You know, I, and, and in my personal conversations with people, I, I hear far more people saying, I don't know why you're doing it, instead of why aren't you doing it? I understand that there were a half a dozen people or a few people on the survey who said that. So the question is, I think, a couple of things. Where are you going to put it that is convenient for people, that is not going to upset neighbors? And are there truly more people who want it than don't want it? I, that, that's more than enough people who want it. And, and I don't, I don't accept that, but, and are we going to take part of Winnequa Park and use that for the dog park? I mean, where are you thinking Alderman would, would be a good place to put it?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to answer that question because I think that's the problem we got into in the first place. I think we need to evaluate, we need to look at, you know, how much land do you need and what, where are, you know, what is the experience of other communities in locating it in a neighborhood? I, I'm sure there'll be opposition from the neighborhood, some of the neighbors. My feeling, and I have, is from looking at, briefly looking at some of the experience in other communities, is that a lot of the fears simply won't be borne out by experience. And I think if we, as, you know, leaders of the, of the community, if we have that, that data, that despite the opposition of the neighbors, that we believe that in fact, if we put it in, it simply really won't be, their fears won't, you know, actually come to fruition, then I think we have a stronger case to, to look at, you know, to put it in somewhere closer in the central part of the city.
Alder Spate?
Yeah, I, a couple of things. I mean, I, I would say that I think Winnequa Park is the logical place for us to try to find a place for this. I have no idea, as I sit here and say that, where that would be in Winnequa Park. But we are getting ready to go through, uh, the process of reimagining and, and trying to finalize a master plan for Winnequa Park. So it might in fact be the perfect time to try to meet this need or desire or want on the part of the community. Uh, the other thing too about Winnequa Park that is unique is that it is a large and sometimes loud place. It's already that. So adding some other activity in Winnequa Park is part of what that park is. I mean, a lot of things go on there all the time, whereas when we talk about these sleepy parks that are off on the edge of an existing neighborhood, it is more disruptive to propose putting a dog park in one of those underutilized spaces. So I, and I just want to clarify, um, well, actually, I wanted to ask a question of the mayor, which I would still like to ask, uh, and then I'll answer the question. I mean, I'll give you my, my opinion, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to know from you. Would you rather see a dog park, uh, central in the city of Manona, or do you think it's equally good to have one out on Femrite?
No, no, I, of course, in the central park would be, central part of the city would be much better.
Okay. Well, I, I believe that too. And I, I believe that, uh, for those of us that see the value in having this amenity in the city of Manona, it's probably worth having that fight than just settling for, you know, dog park in abandoned Public Works Field, which is kind of what we're doing. You know, it's like, it seems like it's an easy way to get something, but you're not really getting what you want. And I think it's worth trying to get what we really want here. And unfortunately, that's not easy to do. It's going to take more time. It's going to take more effort, but I think the city would be better off if, if we were to go through that process and, and to, to fight that fight.
And I'm willing to assist in that, but I'm not going to, you were there. People get very, you know, it got ugly. It got really ugly and it got, and it got personal, you know, and I'm not going to be the Lone Ranger, you know, the record show, I'm not the Lone Ranger on this one.
We're, yeah, we're here.
Yeah, and I hear that. Yep. Alder Wood? Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Holmquist, excuse me.
I see a lot of this discussion similar to, um, a previous item, the pool study. And the reason I'm making that link is, this is the discussion about access and use of space and what do we want to have available? I would like us to consider this larger than a dog park issue and consider it a larger thing of what is the access of people that have leashed dogs or unleashed dogs? And to me, that's the, the bigger issue here of, if it goes back to the genesis of the strategic planning information that we gathered, that there are individuals that were indicating that Manona is not a welcoming city, and there were pieces of information that came out of that that led you to believe that this is one of the strategies to make our city more welcoming. I would want us to take a broader approach rather than a tunnel vision approach of saying, aha, it's the dog park and that's the issue. I think if we widen that scope of how is it that newcomers that might be more familiar with locations that are more supportive of people with leashed and unleashed dogs, and what access they have in their community, that might promote them to get out more and do the things that you're talking about. I'm not necessarily, um, understanding the connection of money to make that larger discussion as it comes to parks and open space planning, policies around leashed and unleashed dogs. I think there, there are a lot of discussions that can happen that capture that piece, that specifically relate back to the issue of how do we make sure that our community is a welcoming community to newer residents that might be looking for this amenity.
Alder Wood?
Um, I guess, you know, what I'm trying to get at with the amendment is, first of all, to, to say, okay, let's take a step back and not identify the location. But probably more importantly is to say to staff and to the Parks Board and any other interested committee that we are, we do want, we would like a dog park. We're not sure if we can find a location for it. But let's go forward with an eval, you know, a serious evaluation process, um, and find out, so.
Could I just ask, could you envision in that process, let's say you don't find? Could I just ask, could you envision in that process, let's say you don't find a central, better location? Does it, is Femrite ruled out?
No, no. I mean, that's, I guess I would say, I wouldn't want to rule in or out any location.
Okay.
So that we avoid that. But, you know, I think you make, you made, I, there was, I agreed with a number of the things that you said about if you can reuse the chain link fence or perhaps even connect that fenced area to the existing fencing at the Public Works Garage or something, that you, you know, the money wouldn't necessarily be lost, but, I mean, just, you know.
And just so you know, we have the study, about forty of the cities in the state, what their laws are about leashes and in walking in parks.
Right.
Gate is out there.
Certainly strongly agree with, with Alderman Holmquist that we need to revisit the, whether we even allow leashed dogs in parks, because right now, under the ordinances, we don't, and that seems like a pretty simple change to make, but.
Alder O'Connor?
That is something that the Park Board plans to take up soon.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't base support on, on a dog park solely on the notion that new people find the community less than, as welcoming as they might like, because I think the national stats are that there's forty-seven percent of homeowners have dogs. And so, in other words, a whole bunch of people who already live here and have lived here for a long time have dogs and might very well take advantage of a dog park, so, I don't know.
And I never said that was the only reason. This was one of the pieces that makes the city, was, there's a lot of pieces that make the city great. This was just one I thought would help.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to sort of detach it from that whole question and say, just, you know, do we want a dog park?
Can I sort of get some, the Park Board, the Park Board, this, in 2015, is going to do a study of park space? Is that correct?
Jake, on Winnequa?
Winnequa.
Winnequa Park, Winnequa Park.
Talking about looking at locations and plans for the dog park?
Hold on. Jake?
There's fifteen thousand dollars allocated for engineering plans for what would be a in-house master plan for Winnequa Park. So that would be looking at priorities of projects moving forward for improvements at our main central park, utilizing in city staff that have planning backgrounds and parking rec boards. So that'll be a series of meetings that I would say would last throughout 2015 and really looking at all of the proposed future improvements to Winnequa Park and what the priority of those projects would be.
So how do you, you've heard the discussion tonight. How do you see as Parks Director going forward with staff looking into this more?
I mean, we've surveyed this topic since 2010 in our Park and Open Space Plan feedback, citizen surveys, and, you know, looking at it from my perspective, you know, there, there's only one logical spot that would have the least impact, and it is Winnequa Park. So if you're looking at a centrally located place for a dog park, there are no other options that are really viable other than Winnequa Park.
So is it feasible to have that included in your assessment, that fifteen thousand dollar?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think we could go back and look at, at places within the park that would be logistical or logical or, you know, make sense. But if you're, if you're looking at that, that was, but you're probably going to have some of the same arguments that you had with the other locations that were proposed.
So I interrupted you, Alder Thomas?
So does that, what I'm trying to figure out is if we need the twenty-five thousand dollars in 2015, if the engineering and study is going to be done in 2015 going forward?
Jake?
Well, if you want it constructed in 2015, and, then yes. If you are just looking at a, if, if you're saying that the Femrite Drive location is not suitable under this proposal, and you want to entertain the thought of it being in the central park, then you wouldn't need the money in 2015 because you'd be looking at construction in 2016 or beyond.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I would like to leave the money in the budget, even though I understand that, you know, we, it might not, we might not get to the point of spending it in 2015. But if we did, we had a lot of, you know, we have a lot of capital projects. Let's say it's not uncommon with capital projects for that to happen, and then they get, you know, they're in the budget, they're approved, they get carried forward. And it might be that we end up deciding, you know, it's a great idea, but we just can't find a place that's worth, you know, spending the actual money to put it in. But I'm going to bang my head on the table if we keep identifying a location at the beginning. I mean, looking at a map and, you know, knowing the locations, I, I see possibly Oneida Park, possibly part of Maywood Park, possibly part of Bridge Park would also be.
Okay. So why don't we try to focus this down? So we have two amendments before us. The most recent amendment was to hold the twenty-five thousand dollars in capital as a placeholder to do a more thorough step-by-step analysis on the viability of a dog park in a better location, in some location within the city. And it was moved and seconded.
I think Alder Bussie was, his hand up earlier.
On that amendment, I think this study from Parks is going to be able to look at a master plan and to see where it might be able to be incorporated. So I don't think that that twenty-five grand is necessary.
But, but that plan is only for Winnequa Park, so.
If it costs fifteen thousand is what your budget is for a master plan for Winnequa? Do you need twenty-five for a master plan for?
No.
You want, you want money for a study, why don't we just say, let's do X amount of money for the study that you're asking for, which is where's the best spot and how to present it to folks?
I'd be, I'd be open to that, say five thousand?
How much?
Five thousand? Eight? I don't know.
Eight thousand?
Eight, okay.
Third amendment?
Five should be enough.
Five should be enough? So why don't we, why don't we set the money, because what you're after is the study. You want the homework done so that when we go to the citizens, we can say, here's the thought behind it, here's the impact that it's going to have in not only your neighborhood, but the community as a whole, and this is the best location, or this, whatever. So.
Are you okay with that, Alder Wood?
Yes.
Would you be willing to withdraw the second amendment?
I'll withdraw the second amendment.
The second agrees to the withdrawal?
Yeah.
All right.
And then I'll make a motion to, I guess, amend this, amend, second amendment to the budget, current budget amendment, to provide five thousand dollars for a dog park study.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, second discussion on that amendment. Alder Bussie?
So then are we getting rid of the twenty-five? That's all?
Right. It would go.
Modifying it to five thousand dollars for the purpose of a study for, okay.
So the net effect on the budget would be a decrease of twenty thousand.
Thank you.
Alder Holmquist?
I'm going to repeat a similar point. I'm going to make it short. If this is a study for a dog park for five thousand dollars, it'll be tough for me to support it. If it's a wider shot, that includes access of areas that dogs might be there leashed or unleashed, I might be in more support of that, looking, looking wider. There are other options than a chain linked fence area for dogs.
How would you word such an amendment?
A study to look at the, the, the use of leashed and unleashed animals in parks and open spaces.
Okay, I'll withdraw my amendment and ask you to make that amendment.
So parks being defined could be a chain linked park or not?
Right.
You're not.
Let the clerk catch up with her. I think she's, just go back and erase the rest of your notes.
All right. Come on, wait.
Yeah, she's just, she's writing it down.
I think there's probably two steps to it. One step would be to make the, a brand new amendment, and the second step would then be to take the twenty-five thousand out of the budget, but so.
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't you make your amendment?
So the amendment would be.
A new amendment, yeah.
A new amendment to, to be five thousand allocated for a study addressing leash and unleashed dogs in parks and open space areas.
I'll second that.
Making recommendations to the Parks Board. Or, scratch the last part, leave that there.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, Alder O'Connor?
I just wondered about adding something to the effect of to include consideration of a dog park, so that, I mean, I realize that you could take that to mean dog park, but, just to be a little more specific.
Okay.
But I think it's a good idea overall, because.
Yep.
The clerk is about to do it.
Before she does that, I would support adding the phrasing to it that Alder O'Connor suggested, that to include.
It's accepted.
Who included it.
Got it.
All right, can you repeat it for Alder Thomas?
And the rest of us.
Five thousand dollars added, allocated for study addressing leashed and unleashed animals, dog just dogs. Hold on. Don't wait. Five thousand dollars allocated for study addressing leashed and unleashed dogs in parks and open spaces, including a dog park.
Consideration of a dog park.
Including consideration of a dog park.
Did you catch that, Alder Thomas?
So we're going to study whether or not we can keep unleashed dogs in the park or, and/or do a dog park?
Yeah.
All of those things, all of the above.
We're going to spend five thousand dollars to do that?
That's what I understand.
Up to.
Alder Spate?
I think the, the will that we are expressing by supporting this is, is our willingness to look carefully at this issue, our, and thus our potential support for doing something substantial to accommodate dogs in our public spaces.
All right. For Alder O'Connor?
I would just point out that we have had a lot of input from people who would like to have something changed in terms of the ordinance for at least letting them walk their dogs on leashes in parks. So there's a big interest in this just outside of the dog park issue. So I think it's good to include, do it all at one time and.
Okay. How about if we try?
Mayor Miller, there's been no second to this amendment?
I'll second it.
I thought Alder Wood did, but.
No, I am now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion by Alder Holmquist, seconded by Alder Wood to allocate five thousand dollars for the consideration or for the analysis of leashed and unleashed dogs in our parks, including consideration of a dog park. Is there further discussion hearing done? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Woods?
Aye. Motion carries now. Is there a motion to?
We have to, we have to get. We have to do the sign.
We have to get rid of, we have to get rid of this amendment.
The twenty-five thousand.
We got to vote on it.
Yeah, we'll vote on the, cutting the funds for the dog park. I'll move to.
Well, there was already the motion. So we just vote.
So if you want to get rid of this, you vote aye of the entire amount.
Correct.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Just, just, do you know what we're doing, Alder Thomas? It's the original motion to eliminate the dog park allocation.
Somebody withdrew that.
No, no. No, this is the original. Nope. This is your motion. You made the motion.
I didn't make the motion. Take it.
Okay. That's correct. Okay. You just brought it forward. All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye. Motion, the amendment passes. Now we return back to item fifteen point dash one, which was eliminating the relocation of the digital messaging board.
Have we got a total?
With the total being marked now?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Two twenty-five, and our goal was to reduce it one-ten, one-ten. So we've doubled the reduction. So if this would go in, we would still be exceeding what I think your original intentional goal is. Do we need further discussion on this item? Yes, Alder Spate, then Alder Wood?
Well, I, I don't want to ruffle any feathers, but I would just say that it doesn't make sense to me to spend the money on moving the sign, given its age. And I wonder, given the financial position we're in, if anyone would consider, in light of that, bringing back that fourth police car? Or can we not revisit?
Yeah.
An item?
You can.
Because I, I don't think it makes sense for us to, just because we have the money doesn't mean we should move this sign. And I, I don't see the logic in paying to move a four-year-old LED sign that we've been told probably won't last ten years. And, and there is an opportunity that the mayor has pointed out to potentially utilize the sign that's being retired at Manona Bank on Bridge Road. And so I think we still have other options that are going to come before us, and it doesn't make sense at this moment to allocate these funds.
Alder Wood, then Alder Thomas?
So if we, and if we do get that possibility to move this sign to the bank, that, we would foot the cost of that? And that would just be the cost of moving it over to the bank?
We would, that's yet to be determined. We haven't brought it up with the bank yet.
All right.
They're probably hearing this for the first time.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're not aware of this. They had shared with me, they're, they're not happy with the sign they originally put in there.
So that's unknown. If we, let's say if we did that, or if we decided to leave the, this current sign where it is, for some of the reasons Alder Spate indicated, where else would we put this sign, you know, the, which would have a variable message on it? If we identified where we're going to put it?
Yes.
Where is?
We've, have ongoing communication right now with the school district and Nichols School. It would be between the two existing wall signs. They're just waiting to see a site plan that was recently completed for us by Strand.
So between which two existing wall signs?
The Manona Drive and Nichols, wall sign on the Nichols.
In the Nichols School property, there's a gap between the two stone wall.
It'd be similar to the one, its current location and layout.
So it would essentially be at that intersection of Nichols, or, yeah, Nichols and Manona Drive?
It would be facing the golf course, kitty corner.
Yep.
I mean, it faces the whole intersection, but directly it's headed towards the golf course. Would be pointed angled.
So you'd have to look to the side as you're driving to see it?
Well, you'd be, see it head-on if you were going south.
Okay, all right.
And if you were going west. South and west, you see it perfectly. You have to turn your head if you're going north and east. Okay. I guess the one final comment I would have on that is if, you know, there's a reason that DOT doesn't allow variable message signs when they're right of way, and they're related to public safety. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us just because we can put it at one of the, I don't know, maybe the second, third busiest intersection in the city. The safety reasons would seem equally valid there, so.
Alder O'Connor?
I would just say that I've, I've been involved in a couple of organizations who've found it very useful to have access to that sign. And I, you know, I think it's kind of a loss. I can understand, maybe there's some safety issues if we can make sure it's a good spot where that's not as big of an issue. But I do think it's something that's used and it's a good way to get, again, if we're trying to build community here, get the word out about various events happening in Manona.
I don't have hard data, but just, the high school now has one.
Right.
That's a little more ornate than the Bridge Road Bank one, but not as ornate as this one we're talking about tonight. And they've found it to be very helpful, and I personally have found it to be helpful to know what's going on at the high school just by driving by.
But your points, well taken, Alder Wood.
Well, although I do, you know, I mean, I agree with Alder Connor, O'Connor, that they are useful, certainly. And I think you could probably address some of the public safety, you know, issues of distracting drivers by the amount of time between changing the messages. So they're not, you know, kind of, people aren't driving and looking for the next message.
So what is the will of this body? We have a motion? We have a motion and a second on this, to approve this. Yep, you may.
Okay, so, if we either leave the sign where it is or give it back to the bank, we can buy a totally new sign and have it installed using TIP funding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
At Nichols?
Yes.
Okay.
So, therefore, it strikes me that, that's a sensible solution to support cutting this, neither leave it where it is and say, "Welcome to Manona," give it back to the bank, put a brand-new sign up there, and figure out where it's going to go, and that, that seems to me, because I had thought that the sign originally was a lot within fourteen thousand. That's the least amount of the cost, so we could get a brand-new sign that would last longer. Otherwise, in six years, didn't make her the life of ten years?
Mm-hmm.
And it's four years old, so in six years, we're gonna be going through this again, and we won't be able to use TIP money to fix it.
Further discussion? It's Alder Wood?
So, how much money then, would we, if we said we're gonna leave the, leave the digital sign, well, let's say, if we leave the digital sign where it is, or possibly relocate it to the bank and install a new sign with, I guess if we put it at someplace that already has the walls, I guess, how much money would we need to do that?
I would recommend, if this body is unsure of, I would recommend that this item be taken out and we readdress this issue next year. It's, it doesn't sound...
But is it gonna make a decision, and I guess the one point of clarification, I would like to know for the meeting with the bank, are we going to assist financially to, I mean?
I would think that'd be the neighborly thing to do, given that they bought the sign.
But couldn't we address that with a budget amendment if we had to? I'm assuming it wouldn't?
Well, that would be an operating issue at that point, yeah. Moving the sign is an operating budget issue.
But we're talking about moving the other sign, right? Potentially?
What other sign?
Yeah, we're talking about moving the only, the static message sign to the bank.
I thought there was discussion that they didn't like the sign.
Right, I'm sure they would get rid of it or sell that one, but they, they were talking about shopping for a sign like this one, so they would get an additional one, and then what we would be proposing tonight, what I'm hearing, is we could approach them, do you want your sign back at no cost, because you already paid for it? But we would have to do some dismantling and things that Pat's saying would be the neighborly thing. Alder Bussie?
I, I don't know that guessing what they're gonna need and should, you know, why would we give the bank a variable message sign? The only reason they got what they did is, was because it said, "Welcome to Manona," was an entry sign.
They got their name on the bottom of the...
At Bridge Road, though, at Bridge Road, that sign, if that's what you're referring to. But I, they haven't even asked for it yet, so, just, why don't we just deal with this? And if they come, you know, they may have to wait until next year to...
Okay.
...address it, because we're, why do we try to guess what they're gonna do?
Okay.
Or want?
All right, so, before us is the motion, and it's been seconded, to eliminate the relocation of the digital messaging board. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
All right, so, we have achieved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reductions to the capital borrowing, correct, Mark?
Two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Alder Spate had mentioned if he could put into reconsideration an additional squad.
We would need a second.
Yeah, is there, are you going down that path?
Um, yeah. Sure. All right. Care to make a motion?
I would ask, I would make a motion that we reconsider the cut of the fourth police car, which was item fifteen-five, reconsideration.
So, how many dollars, Mark, would we be, would, we would be making a new amendment to place back in twenty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a squad car? Is there a second?
I would second it, except I don't think I can, because, in fact, I don't think Chad can make, if it's a motion to reconsider, I don't know. I guess I'll leave it to the chair to rule on, if it's a motion to reconsider, it's supposed to be somebody in the majority making the motion, but you're the chair, so you can, I'll second the motion.
Completely new amendment.
I mean, technically, we're the losers, so...
Right, right, no, we're looking, this is a new amendment. This is, this is not reconsideration.
Add one more car.
You're adding a car.
Excellent ruling.
So, we are adding a squad for twenty-seven thousand dollars, and you, that's gonna do it, correct, Chief? All right, and you did second that, Alder Wood?
I did.
All right, discussion?
Well, I mean, I hesitate to do it, because I'm, I just want to thank all of you for the congeniality that we've had tonight and all of this stuff, and, and I'm not gonna have any hard feelings if this council decides that we're sticking to our guns, but I did want to put it out there, because while I think that fiscal responsibility is key, and I think we've exhibited that tonight, I, I do feel that our police have, have taken the hit in years past when, when they were forced to, and I, and I think we have the ability this year to give them something that they need, and, and so, I just would ask your consideration of that.
Further discussion, Alder Wood?
One very quick point, if we add the twenty-seven thousand back in to the budget, we would still be cutting on, in the total of all the amendments, we'll have cut, I believe, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That is correct. Further discussion? Hearing done, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Nay.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Nay.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Nay.
Motion does not carry by four to two vote. I almost had my first vote in three years, a mayor. Darn. All right.
Good job, everyone.
I concur with Alder Spate about making sausage. Now, we need to...
I'm gonna overgrudge you, Rick.
Can't wait for the next, I can make power points, too. Now, we have before us is the overall capital budget with tonight's amendments. Thereby attached, is there a motion for approval?
We already have one.
To approve the whole thing, hold on.
Yeah, we did, I did move initially. We did, okay.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval of the entire budget with the amendments. Alder Bussie?
Do we have, what is the final number, grand total? Five million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and thirty-one. Five million, what, six?
Six hundred and sixteen thousand.
Four hundred and thirty-one. The total amount of borrowed funds was four million, fifty-three thousand, fourteen dollars. I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Say it again.
Four million? Fifty-three thousand, fourteen dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Lot of cupcakes to pay for that.
Discussion?
She's buying those now that you've got all the scuds. Yep, that's right, I remember what I heard. Thank you, thank you, Chad. All right, there's a motion before us and a second to approve the capital budget for two thousand and fifteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Budget passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to item two, new business, you'll note that item A is start for immediate action is consideration of resolution fourteen dash one zero dash one nine eight nine, requesting exemption from the county library tax this evening.
Suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, take this out of order, it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye to suspend the rules. Against, motion, sir, motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, I will note that at tonight's finance and personnel, this was passed. Eric?
So, every year, the council has the opportunity to waive the county library tax for our residents, and once again, our library meets state county standards, so you can save the taxpayers' money by passing this resolution.
Discussion, Alder Wood?
I would just note, as I did at the finance meeting, that although I didn't crunch all the numbers, I believe that it's a couple of good things, that we, Manona's equalized value per capita, I believe, is the highest of all these communities listed, which also has allowed us to have a higher, a relatively high per capita spending on the, the library, which I'm proud, very proud of that, I would say, it's not, doesn't mean that each resident is paying, if you calculated it, that each resident is paying that per capita amount, but, anyway. This is a no-brainer resolution, but I just wanted to make, make the point about the equalized value and the spending.
It is a nice notation. I wish we had the press here tonight to capture that thought.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, item two B is consideration of ordinance ten dash one four dash six 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 concerning the issuance of operators' licenses, brought forth by the License and Review Committee. Alder Wood?
This is essentially a sort of fixing the ordinances and our practices to be consistent with the state statutes that would require, instead of the city clerk issuing operators' licenses, which is actually not allowed by the state statutes, it would require the common council to approve them, so we would see, which is what the state statutes require. So, we would see in our packets in the future, perhaps once or twice a year, or maybe throughout the year, we would get operators' licenses to be approved, and I assume most of those would go in the consent agenda. It also amends the ordinance to make sure to allow the city clerk to continue to issue provisional licenses, which the statutes do allow.
Okay, discussion? All right, there is no miscellaneous business, and I would ask that Alder Wood discuss miscellaneous business as he did earlier tonight at Personnel and Finance?
Okay, in discussion with the city attorney, I guess it was right after the last License Review Committee, he had stated his concern about having this item on all of our agendas, that it's kind of an open invitation to violating the open meetings law, because it doesn't identify anything specifically of what would be discussed, and therefore, according to the Attorney General of Department of Justice, if you, it's, you're on thin ice if you start talking about anything under miscellaneous business.
So, I've asked...
Alder Holmquist, I think, asked...
City Administrator to check with the city attorney and see about how we go forward with this, on the night when we happened to have an alder who wanted to bring up some miscellaneous business.
Yeah.
So, having heard what you just heard, is it appropriate to bring up what you wanted to bring up?
No, and I'll just, I'll just address that with the administrator.
Yep.
All right. I have some miscellaneous business.
Yep.
Those cupcakes were delicious. Thank you very much for bringing them. Your name will be on that citation for record.
Proud of cupcakes, it's not on the agenda.
Yep, who brought them, who paid for them? Item I, reports of committee's commission boards, mayor, city administrator, city attorney and department managers. Is there anyone, Chief, was there anything more you care to bring forward? Lieutenant Doomey? Alder Holmquist?
Sorry, I was chewing. Public safety, as indicated earlier from one of the public appearances, is still actively addressing the neighborhood traffic management plan, and there have been some revisions to help make it simpler to understand and more straightforward, and that will be going to Public Works as well for their comment and feedback to look at a plan to address particular issues, and I think this resident made a, a great presentation of an area of concern, and without a, a process for us as a city to review these concerns and actually make decisions based on data, we're kind of at a whim of people's opinions, so I encourage people to read that draft and offer any supportive recommendations.
Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, you may.
Is that gonna be brought up at your next public safety meeting, and if so, when is that?
I'll look and tell you when it gets to your turn.
Alder Bussie?
Finca meeting next Monday, also a week from Thursday, there's gonna be a groundbreaking for the leakage apartments.
Is there not for pizza oven, potentially a groundbreak, ribbon cutting?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I have one on my schedule, but I'm not sure if that's been deferred. Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
Library Board meets tomorrow night, CDA meets next week, I think.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, and because Alder O'Connor, or, excuse me, wow, Alder Thomas isn't here to get her a cupcake, I will eat it for her.
And now, anything you care to share, Alder Thomas?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am. Committee reports?
But other than that, nothing.
Okay.
Is it your birthday? Is this your...
Is it your birthday today?
No, that's the temperature.
Oh. I never knew a young lady to divulge her age.
You're in big trouble.
That was Wood, that was Wood who said that.
I was, I thought that number sounded far too high.
City clerks?
Just notice to everyone that voter ID is not required. That was blocked by the Supreme Court. Voter photo ID is not required to vote in November, but stay tuned, that could change for two thousand and fifteen, but at this point, for November, no photo ID.
And absentee ballots could be, began today, correct?
Yes, absent, in-person absentee balloting began at City Hall today and goes through the thirty-first, however, the polling places are more than happy and willing to accommodate your voting needs.
Did you have something, Alder Spate?
No, I was just gonna comment on the ability to vote now at City Hall.
City Administrator, Mark?
Just a couple of things, one is we had a tabletop exercise in regards to our disaster plan this afternoon, when, or this morning, when we had all the department heads and a lot of the supervisory level staff participate in an, in a mock tornado that went through Manona and how we would handle it, and all's good, so, we did that well.
I think he was gonna throw some surprises at you, did he do so?
No, no real surprises, none that we, you know, we, we anticipate all situations.
Did we have enough squads to accommodate that safely?
We do, with mutual aid, yep.
All right.
Anyway, that, that plan will be going to public safety within the next, probably not this upcoming meeting next week, but the following meeting for consideration and recommendation to council, so, anticipate in December, this body will be considering that document for approval.
Once again, we're fortunate to have residents, in this case Larry...
Larry Reed, yes.
Larry Reed, who has great expertise with the state in disaster planning, and he has spent two years working on this to get this to this point, so, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, it's, we couldn't have done it without him, that's for sure. And then, the last thing is, the mayor asked me to address a date for committee of the whole for the two thousand and fifteen operating budget, and we would have to do it prior to our next council meeting, because that would be first read of the operating budget, and we're looking at next Thursday, the thirtieth, at, at six P.M. See if that works with your schedules.
Are you back, Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Okay.
Next Thursday, October 30th, at 6:00 PM.
I'll be out of town.
Pretty sure that works for me. I had something that they would have got canceled. Okay. Well, we'll shoot that out, but tentatively, let's plan on that for now. Anything else, Pat?
No.
The other thing I have is, once again, Broadway is not a city in Manona construction project. Madison Metropolitan Sewer District doing that, and they are several weeks behind schedule. They'd still plan to be completed yet this fall. But stay tuned. But I know it hasn't always run as smoothly as Manona Drive did, and people are saying, why not? It's, it's not our project, so just wanted that to be noted.
Cross your fingers they do it before the asphalt plants close, which could be.
Well, they have a plan for that, and I didn't like what I heard, but, yeah, they will pave it and then tear it up in the spring and repave it. So it will be paved.
Not if we get a real cold wave and asphalt plant shut down.
No, no, they'll, they'll use concrete, I guess, or some, they're ridiculous what the penalties call for. Yeah, it did, it seemed like, bass ackwards.
Are we going to get a, a copy of the approved capital budget then?
Yep.
PDF or?
Other years. Um, we have a single appointment this evening. Teresa Rodamacher is being, is asked to be appointed to the Sustainability Committee effective immediately. Her term running through May of 2016. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion second for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, everyone.